Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us. This is our second meeting of the day. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. We are honored today to have Pastor Ron Merrill from the Hatch Church to lead the invocation. Ron, thanks for being here.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for giving us such an amazing place to live. Thank you for the love that you have for us. For all the leaders that you've placed in this room today and the members of the community that are here today too, we just give you thanks for all of them. Would you just grant a spirit of humility and wisdom to everybody as the discussion takes place today and decisions are made? We love you. Thanks for living us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor.
Mayor, instead of doing the pledge myself, I'd like to defer to Troop Seven over there, those guys in the back. If you'll come up front, please. I think it would be more meaningful having them do it than if I were to do it.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And I like what's on the back of your scarves.
Hey, Steve.
Neckerchief.
My daughter designed that.
Is that right? They're beautiful. Nice job.
Craig, any announcements for the good of the folks? We have one proclamation.
Roll call.
Roll call, Mayor.
Yep, roll call.
We're all here.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Kukne.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Now we go to proclamations. Item A.
Item A, proclaiming April 18 through May 16, 2015, as Prescott's Bike Month. And I believe Russ Willis is here to accept the proclamation.
Russ Willis in a suit. This is a first.
One see you.
I hope you got a chain guard on your bicycle. You're going to be in trouble. Yeah.
Well, this is a proclamation declaring Prescott's Bike Month, April 18 through May 16, 2015. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today millions of Americans use the bicycle for daily transportation and/or recreation, and whereas on- and off-road bicycle events draw thousands of overnight visitors to Prescott each year, contributing significantly to the local economy, and whereas Prescott is becoming a more popular tourist destination due in part to the efforts of the Prescott Mountain Bike Alliance, the Over the Hill Gang, the Yabapai Trails Association, and the Open Space Alliance, and whereas Prescott Alternative Transportation is working with the city to complete Prescott's streets, make them safer and more accessible for all citizens. They provide bicycle and pedestrian safety instruction in elementary schools and have secured federal funds for local bike improvements. And whereas the month of May is designated National Bike Month by the League of American Bicyclists, and the week of May 11 to May 15 is National Bike to Work Week, and whereas all city residents are invited and encouraged to participate in the annual ride to work with the mayor and city council on Friday, May 15 at 7:15 a.m., starting at the shopping center parking lot at West Gurley and Idlewild Road, proceeding to City Hall. Now therefore, I, Marlon D. Kirkendall, Mayor of Prescott, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of Prescott, do hereby proclaim April 18 to May 16, 2015, as Prescott's Bike Month. Russ.
Thank you so much. Mayor Kirkendall, members of council, thank you all on behalf of Prescott Alternative Transportation, but also on behalf of everyone who gets around in this town on foot and by bicycle. For the next four weeks, we'll be celebrating the bicycle not only as a recreational tool but as basic transportation. I have for distribution event calendars for the coming four weeks, and these are special. This is the proof galley with all the typos and omissions still on it, a collector's item back there on the table. We'll have the finished version out tomorrow. They'll be up at the bike shops and some of the local businesses. I want to highlight this coming Friday, actually the night before Bike Month actually begins. And of course, in Prescott, we can't just have Bike Month in a month. It's got to be half of April and half of May. That's how special. But Friday evening, April 17, there'll be a gathering for the kickoff for Bike Month over at Granite Mountain Brewing, and live music, raffles, a dollar from each pint goes to PAT. And then four weeks later, we'll wrap up with our annual Pedals and Pumps Gala upstairs from the Tiz Gallery. Live music, live and silent auctions, excellent food and beverages. And as Councilwoman Wilcox mentioned in reading the proclamation, just before Bike Month concludes, Friday morning, May 15, we're all going to get to the top of the hill with the mayor and several members of council.
Everybody.
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 Everybody. On bicycles, come down the hill, come down the trails, come to City Hall, and if people like me coordinate things properly, we'll have coffee and donuts at the end. Okay? So thank you all so much.
Russ, thank you. Let's go to the consent agenda. Dana, you want to read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item 1A, approval of minutes of city council meetings held on March 3, 2015, and March 10, 2015. Item B, award of city contract number 2015-137 for the Mackin Building mold remediation project to C and E Services Incorporated, doing business as Arizona Environmental Group in the amount of $12,663.87. And item C, approval of amendment number 1 to city contract number 2015-003A1 for the fiscal year 2015 pavement preservation project with cactus asphalt incorporated in the amount of $20,354.87.
Any changes to the consent agenda from anybody?
Mayor, I just had a question on item B. It just seems like there's a huge difference between the high bidder and the low bidder, and this one's all over the books, and it has to do with removing mold out there at the fairgrounds. On these guys, I mean, they're coming in at 12.6, the high was $33,000. Is there a guarantee or warranty that they are going to get the mold gone and it's going to stay gone? Is there... What makes the difference between those bids? Why are they so different?
Mayor and council, good afternoon. There was a wide disparity between the bids, but we made sure we checked with the vendors. They had onsite pre-bid so that they knew what they were bidding on and what was required under the contractual terms that we were asking for, and it's just the way that the bids came in. Is there any guarantee the mold won't return? That'll be up to us and facility staff to make sure that we keep the atmosphere in the Mackin Building at a temperature that's where it just won't let the mold proliferate. Proliferate. And that's about all I can tell you on how come they were so disparate.
Yeah, I just saw that through a red flag from you. Thank you for answering that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Motion made in seconds. Vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, the next item, the liquor license consent agenda, we're going to jump over that and go to item A of the regular agenda because the discussion on that item will determine how we want to look at the procedure now on the special event liquor licenses. So that said, let's go to the regular agenda, item A.
Item 3A, adoption of ordinance number 4934-1472, revising City Code Chapters 8-9 regarding the special event application approval process. Ordinance number 4934-1472, on ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yabapai County, Arizona, amending certain sections of Title 8, Section 8-9, parade special event and public safety permits of the Prescott City Code.
Good afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Over the last year or so, Recreation Services has been working with stakeholders in the community to refine and improve our special event process. So as part of that, and to kind of clean that up, these are some code revisions that would need to happen to line themselves better with the work that we've done. And they are as follows. For non-reoccurring events, currently, we have a 30-day window that the application has to be in. We need to extend that to 60 days in order to have a comprehensive review and coordinate with other stakeholders. And by non-reoccurring, I mean like a one-time fundraiser, that type of a thing. Also, for the regular reoccurring special events, we need to move from 60 days to 90 days, again, just to work with the stakeholders, line the events up better and position them better. Also, as a part of the process, we got clarification that the, in this case, the city council needs to approve special event liquor licenses prior to the state approval. So in order for that to happen, we need to move from the current, I believe, 45 days to 90 days so that we can get that to council, just as you pointed out, you've got some today. The other one is the special event... If a special event is denied, the appeal process. Currently, it reads that if the special event is denied by the special event committee, they can appeal to the city manager within five days, and the city manager will rule on that within 10 days. We've just added the language that that can happen administratively, or the city manager or his designee could take that to council and then inform the appellant of the date of that council meeting. So these code revisions, you know, they don't specify a uniform hours during which liquor may be served at the events for which the special liquor licenses are being requested due to the wide variation in special event types, purposes, locations, public and private. A consideration of hours would continue to be on a case-by-case basis. So with that, I guess I would open it up to any questions that you have.
Mayor, I've got one.
Yeah.
Joe, in this application process, does this application lengthening or changing of the days only have to do with people that are requesting alcohol licenses, or is it across the board a change?
Well, it's across the board change, and it's for the event itself, all of the components of the event, not just hours of operation for liquor or location or anything like that. It's for the whole event. So the applicant would fill out the total application, and instead of having for a non-reoccurring event, having that submitted to us within 60 days, or 30 days, would now need to be 60 days. So it looks at the whole event.
Okay. And it's just not a... You know, it's amazing how many people want liquor. I guess that's good if it brings people in, but I just wanted to make sure that it was an overall license, overall process, and not just associated with liquor. Thank you.
Greg.
Thanks, Joe, and Mayor. Joe, and I know there was a lot of work put into this, and I appreciate all that, but now we come back to this, your presentation, and other than just conforming with the state liquor laws, it seems like we haven't moved at all if it's case-by-case, and we haven't... I don't know how the stakeholders, meaning the people around the bar and restaurant folks and anybody that would be affected by these events, how they feel about it. I just don't see, if it's case-by-case, I don't see us moving in any direction on that.
Councilman Lizelle, there was some concern from some of the downtown business owners about special events that serve alcohol later, and the reality of that is there's very few. I can think of two of those, the rodeo dance and the Whiskey Row Street Dance, that, you know, have later, potentially later hours of operation. So when we say on a case-by-case basis, we're really talking about a small pool of potential events to look at.
Mayor, maybe I can add to that.
Let me throw something out, and maybe you can address it. For the last several years that I can remember downtown events, we've always been concerned of how late they're going to operate selling liquor. And the conversation has always been somewhere in the area between 9:00 and 10:00, and I think we've tried to hold to that. But in this case, what did I say, 3:00? They go to midnight?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify something on the Party in the Pines specifically. That was one where there was a question on their application. They put two different hours, 1:00, 10:00, and 1:12:00. I just confirmed with the event promoter that it truly is 10:00, that they will stop serving alcohol on that, and we will reaffirm that at the Special Event Committee meeting on Thursday. They're one of the applicants that will be at that meeting. So they've assured me that 10:00 is when liquor sales will be cut off at Party in the Pines.
Okay, well, I see one here, 5:00 p.m. until midnight. That's the basis, Prescott, boosters. Party in the Pines is 12:00 p.m., and I'm assuming that's noon until midnight. Turn off the live music at 10:00, but doesn't say anything about selling, stopping selling of alcoholic beverages. And am I missing another one?
Baseball boosters.
There's another one until midnight. But anyway, go ahead, John.
Well, to address Councilman Lizelle's specific question, the state statute, Title 4 Liquor prohibits the city from adopting an ordinance or regulation that's contrary to state law, in particular when it comes to the time when an offer on-premise licensee can sell liquor. And as we know, liquor sales between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. is essentially prohibited. So as a tactical matter, I don't think the city would be allowed to adopt an ordinance or any sort of formal policy regulation that would say for special events, the latest you could sell as an on-premise licensee, special on-premise licensee, as 10:00 p.m. However, I think that because a special event liquor license is not a recommendation, as with most liquor licenses, the city's vote or the council's vote is a recommendation to the state board, the special event license is essentially an approval. So along with that authority to approve, sort of be the final approval of a special event license, I think the council can set reasonable timeframes and reasonable restrictions based on the factors that you take into account. So for instance, I think you can take into account the impact on the surrounding area of a special event license. If it's an outdoor event, you can set hours earlier so it doesn't impact the surrounding areas versus maybe an indoor event, which may not have the same kind of noise. So you can set, on a case-by-case basis under the law, for special event licenses, timeframes after which, you know, liquor would not be able to be sold. But you have to be able to sort of articulate the reasons for that impacts on the area, for instance. So it may be that, for instance, on item B, on the next item, that's at Tim's Toyota, that liquor sales to midnight for a special event may have very little or no impact on the surrounding area, because there may not be residential in the area, it may be all commercial. And so that may be one where you say midnight's okay. However, Party in the Pines, and from what I'm hearing, they're agreeing to stop sales at 10:00. That's outdoors, and it's also surrounded by, or at least on a couple of sides, by residential. So that would give you a basis for saying, well, we don't want it to go past 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock or some reasonable time, so as to not have an outdoor event with liquor sales going to midnight, I think you can do that. So you do have to kind of look at these separately, individually, and just because a special event licensee asks for a particular time, I think if you have a reason for saying, well, that's too late, here are the reasons why, we're going to approve this till 10:00 o'clock versus midnight, I think you have that authority. But as a general... I don't think we can adopt an ordinance or as a general policy that just says across the board 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, because the state law doesn't allow us to do that.
I think I'm thinking a little bit also about the competitive nature. We have bar owners in town that pay a lot of tax, pay the city a lot of sales tax. And the special events, because in probably all cases, they're dealing with nonprofits, and because of the nonprofit status, the city does not generate any sales tax at all. So if now then that's going to be able to operate till 1:00 in the morning, the city, at least if there's a closing time of 9:00 or 10:00, while that still gives an opportunity for the local bar owners to do some business and generate some sales tax for the city. So I think it's more than just what it appears on the surface. And I see a couple of bar owners here. Pretty soon, we'll go to the audience for a comment, but any more, anything else from the council?
Yeah, Marlon, I'd go in concert with what you're commenting on, because, you know, not only do they collect sales tax, they have to pay for permission to sell alcohol on legal industry in the city to begin with, and I'm not so sure that the nonprofits do. So what you've got is a sort of unfair playing field to begin with. These guys have to pay two or three times. They've got to pay the state, they've got to pay the county, they've got to pay the city, all because we can. And yet nonprofit comes in, and they don't have to pay anybody except to compete with the people that are in business in this town, so.
Anyone else before we go to the public?
Mayor, council, if I could point something out real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
The special events that are held on private property are not bound to come to the Special Event Committee and go through that process since they are on private property. Some do and some don't. We try to get them there. But the reason I bring that up is the discussion that we have during the Special Event Committee meetings are exactly what we're talking about here, impacts, whether they be traffic impacts or whatever. So we look at the whole application and do have those discussions about impacts to surrounding businesses or surrounding residential areas. It's the ones that are on private property that we don't have as much control over. So that's why what you see in front of you are events that are held on private property that we have not vetted through the special event process.
Yeah. A question, maybe you've got an answer. A bricks-and-mortar bar and restaurant are compelled to buy their product from an authorized distributor that it makes sure that the tax through the system is taken care of. If there's an event on private property, what's in place to make sure that those supplies are provided by an authorized distributor, or can they go just to the drugstore or whatever and buy their product and circumvent the whole system?
I can answer that. The Special Event Liquor License statute requires that the organization selling liquor under Special Event License shall purchase the liquor from the holder of a license authorized to sell off sale or a licensed wholesaler. So they can...
So that is covered.
If they actually buy off, if they purchase it from a licensed off sale, they're actually paying the sales, the TPT, on that purchase once. So from the wholesaler, you know, they don't necessarily, they don't do that. So if they're buying from the drugstore, buying a bunch of beers and reselling them, they don't, it's not a... They still pay the sales tax on it, I believe.
So, John, are you saying that the nonprofit has to use an authorized license?
Or purchase it from a licensed off-sale retailer. So they can buy it, for instance, from Costco, or a regular wholesaler. They can buy it from a retailer, at which point they're paying, they would pay the TPT as a function of that retail purchase, or they can buy it from a wholesaler.
So they're paying the taxes, but they don't necessarily pay for permission to the city like a bar owner does, or to the county like a bar owner does, or to the state like a bar owner does for the privilege of selling the alcohol?
There's an application fee for the special event license?
Yes, there is an application fee for a special event liquor license. The city charges $62 per day.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
I'm the lone wolf, I'm afraid. Mr. Palladini, when he was talking about state statutes and the city had to follow certain laws, John left, and then you clarified saying that the city can basically do what they want, so it was a little confusing, to be quite honest with you. First of all, and I'm not up here as an adversary, I really believe, my heart to heart, you're all pro-business, so we just want to clarify some things. All we've asked for, first of all, I personally like the events in the square. I don't think they should be moved, although I'd love to see the rodeo street dance moved to the middle school someday. That would be nice. So I'm not here against any events. I think street closure should be responsible. I think the events need to have accountability for the money, especially there are fundraisers. And just to clarify a thing, some of that liquor is donated to the fundraisers, that they're not paying for it. So they have a leg up there, too. And I'm not trying to take away from fundraisers, believe me. I donate plenty, and so do most of the hospitality business in this town donate to charities. I know Chris does in his business. He donates a lot of things from his business to help a lot of these events out. So all we're really asking for is an 8:00 curfew for liquor sales. That's all we're asking for, basically, an accountability and responsibility. The events can go to 11:00, 12:00 o'clock. That's fine. And it's not only so much cutting into our sales, it's the liability, because some of those events on the square, you know, if they go to 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, I'm not sure how much control there is for alcohol service there. Like in our businesses, we've got to be very on top of it. I don't know what kind of controls are out there. So those things end at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, and those people are all turned loose all over town, and who knows what they've had to drink, and we've got to deal with the issues. If it stops at 8:00, it's a lot more reasonable where they're going to be as far as their alcohol content, I would think, than later in the night from an event that's on the square, because I don't know who's policing it. In our businesses, we have to police it, because our liquor licenses are on the line if we, you know, over-serve or someone got hurt. So that's all we really want, 8:00 curfew on liquor. The events can certainly go later.
Dave, you're not talking about, you're talking about square events.
Square events. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Just on the square. If they want to do, you know, in the pines till 1:00 in the morning, we don't care. But on the square, I think it's a whole different world down here, and you alluded to that, Mayor, about the sales tax that we pay all year long. So that's basically it. We're not asking for much, just an 8:00 curfew for liquor on the square. Certainly on private property or other places, they can certainly do what they want, or in the pines or Pioneer Parkway. So that's basically it. I want to thank Joe again for his hard work and all of you for listening. But I really, you know, I can sit out for listening. You're all really pro-business. It's not like there's a, you know, we're fighting each other. We all have the same goal, so, you know, that is appreciated. And I know I'm the only one here because Matt thought you weren't going to vote on this today, so he, and Jimmy Savoini, I guess, thought the same thing. So John and I showed up, but when Mr. Palladini, he left. So anyway, I thought I'd stick it out, and I'm glad I did. So anything else for me? Sorry about my voice.
Well, Dave, from what our attorney has said, it's tough to put a blanket 8:00. We'd be trumping state statute, but we'd have to really depend on the integrity of the event system and examine these truly case-by-case, which is going to involve people like you and the event committee and examine these with transparency and openness.
What I don't want and we don't want is every time there's a special event, and if we oppose it or oppose the timeframe, we have to come every single time and appeal it. We don't want to do that. We don't want to get into that game. So in our opinions, and I don't know why this, if it's a special event and the city, it's on city property, I don't understand why the state would control what time it can close or not close. I think that would be a city decision, not the state's decision. It's not like they've got a liquor license year-round like the rest of us do. You know, it's a one-time or two-time usage, so I don't understand why the city couldn't control that.
Right.
And I don't know the law as well as John does, but I'm just saying, it seems to me the city can control what time things go on in their own streets without the state getting involved.
Okay. Anyone else?
How many events per year go past 8:00 right now?
Events that are not on private property, I'm aware of one.
Do you know, Dave, is there any other ones? There's just the Whiskey Row Street Dance one night?
I don't know for sure. I think that's the only one. But that's the biggie. That's the busiest week of the year in town, so.
So I'd just like to point out again that it really is very few events, in this case, one that I can think of. So when we talk about a case-by-case basis, it isn't like there's a half a dozen of these events. It's more like one event that may be going later that would negatively impact the surrounding area or whatever, that certainly if the business owners had a concern about it, they could speak to that at a council meeting as you vote to approve or deny the liquor license.
Yeah, but there could be more than one. There could be more than two. Next year, there could be 10 people that want to go till 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock, and we don't know. That's why if we could set it at 8:00 o'clock or 9:00 o'clock even, if we want to give a little, then it's set. So, and that's just with the liquor. The event can go on, you know? We're not trying to stop the events.
You know, Joe, one of the things that Dave brought up that, of course, raises a red flag for me almost every time is liability. And, you know, at some level... And, you know, at some level, if, if we have no ability to oversee who's ensuring that you don't have a bunch of people out there over serving alcohol on public streets, now I realize that the county properties, it's county property, but public streets in the city of Prescott, we're accountable for those. And if we don't have the mechanism in place to ensure that somebody isn't out there over serving, whether it's beer or hard liquor, I mean, and we're issuing a permission for somebody to go do that, in what, in what position is the city held accountable?
We require any event on city property to provide insurance. So at a minimum, it's a $1 million, $2 million policy. They can even buy it through the risk pool. The risk pool actually issue these insurance policies where the city's named as an additional insured, and the cost of that policy is the event organizer. So I guess my, my point was, in reading the statute, it says the city can't adopt a, an ordinance or regulation that, that sets a blanket time. I don't, but again, at the same time, I don't think that there, that on a case by case, you, you know, depending on the circumstances of the particular event, that you can, you can say, this is the, you know, we'll approve this license up to this time at night, and it's sort of a take it or leave it at that point for the event organizer. And, and, and he's right, too, the, the, you know, the, if it's on a city street, or if it's a city event on the, on the courthouse square, where, where we're getting permission from the county to have an event, and then we're sort of assigning that, you know, doing it like the whiskey off-road, for instance, we have a lot more control, because that event's got to go through the special event committee. So there's a lot more control to set it up before it ever gets to the council that, that the special event committee will recommend approval of the event, or will approve the event, the liquor license, but subject to the liquor license, so the liquor sales only go until eight o'clock, for instance. So it's going through that process where it doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot of events, maybe other than one, that are even, that will get through the special event committee with a request for a liquor license that goes past eight o'clock.
And you know, Mayor, there is, you know, there may not be the same expenses, but there are expenses even in setting up these special events. You know, I'm thinking about the whiskey off-road that's going to take place here in about two weeks. They're bringing in nationally known music talent to play, and it will bring out the crowds on April 24th in Prescott. You know, what would we have? I don't know. You, you watch the crowds every day, Dave, you know. The night of April 24th, would we be packed like we will be with the whiskey off-road?
Town's packed right now.
You know, with, when you bring the refreshments down there to play that stage, they bring in people from the valley even to come up. So, I mean, there's benefits there, but there's expenses with them, and they got to make their, their end to, to pay for the talent, to pay for the police, to pay for the fire, the traffic. I think there's, on a case by case basis, we can go through this, because it sounds like the, the problem is really one event that we know of that's going past eight o'clock to begin with. I mean, this is a one thing, and maybe that event just needs to move. Maybe that, that event needs to go down to the junior high ball field, or, you know, if you, if you tie it in with the Fourth of July and the rodeo, why don't we just hold the whole thing at the rodeo grounds? I would think that'd be a perfect place to have it. Then we wouldn't have to worry about these things to begin with. Just a thought.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else public to speak? Dave, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Saying nothing, let's go back to the liquor license consent agenda.
Mayor, do you want to approve that agenda item? Agenda item A?
What is the?
Adopting the?
Sure. Okay, I'll just go ahead and do that. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 4934-1472.
Motion made, seconded, vote please.
Passes six to one. Council member Lizelle dissenting.
Okay. That said, let's go back to the liquor license consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Item two, liquor license consent agenda. Do you want me to read my presentation? Mayor and Council, since this is the first council meeting that the special event liquor licenses are being presented to council for approval, I thought I'd explain the process, proposed process for presenting these to you. Each week, any special event liquor license application will be placed on a liquor license consent agenda. With these items being listed on the consent agenda, the council can choose to vote on the items with one motion, or you can remove any of the applications for discussion and hold a separate vote. Any regular liquor license applications, such as a new license, person-to-person transfer, the series six, series 12, any of those types of applications will continue to be, to be placed on the regular agenda with the applicant attending the meeting to answer any questions that you might have. And that's the proposed process, but if there are any concerns or changes you'd like to see, we could make those, those types of changes. And then on today's liquor license agenda, we have four applications for a series 15 liquor license.
One question. On, on item D, as presented by Mr. Baines, that the time probably should be changed in the documentation from 12:00 PM till 10:00 PM, as Joe brought out.
Can I comment on that? This is something, I, I asked about this, the promoter, and even though liquor sales at this event would stop at 10:00 PM, if the license ends at 10:00 PM and 10:01, somebody has a can of beer in their hand, then they would be subject to a fine if they were inspected. So they, what they've explained to me is they leave it till midnight, which gives them the time to close out the event, push everyone out, make sure that nobody has any open containers, et cetera. That's the background on that, is what I've been told.
So then we're going to leave it up to the applicant to police the liquor.
What we have generally, and Joe, this would be a question for you, who from the city would be in attendance of this, a party in the pines event?
Well, first off, Councilman Arnold, they do have to comply with all the state liquor laws. So they, they have to treat it just as if they were a bricks and mortar business that served alcohol. So they, they have to, the state laws are applicable. Secondly, we, we will or can implement the event boss at any of the events that we want. I would, I would point out that we can only go so far with that. We can't staff it at every event. But again, they have to comply with all the state liquor laws, just like any bricks and mortar business that serves alcohol.
Will there be police presence at the event?
I can't answer that without looking at the special event application. Typically, when PD looks at that, based on the number of attendees, they will have off-duty police officers. I just don't remember off the top of my head if this was enough to trigger off-duty police officers, but it could very well have.
I believe that they have to, off-duty.
Okay.
Off-duty, but uniformed usually.
Yes.
Yes. And you know, let's, the liquor board of the state of Arizona trolls these events on a regular basis, too. And I don't know how long ago, but they have written a fine before, too, for one of the bartenders took a drink and the liquor board was standing right there and saw him do it.
You know, Steve, I'm, I'm with you in making sure that there's some accountability, and that if the agreement is 10 o'clock, that sales stop at 10.
I'm okay with that.
So, you know, if we can give direction to staff to figure out a process to ensure that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, because that's the only one, again, that's on private property. All, all four of these are on private property. You know, I, I don't see an issue with some of them, because they're inside. So, you know, frankly, I don't want to micromanage what we're doing here in Prescott. So we'll leave it up to Joe to do that. That's your job. You're the special events guy that's dealing with the recreation department and the director, so I'm willing to make a motion if we need to.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept liquor license consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Second. Motion made, seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Well, let's, let's go back to the regular agenda. Item B.
Item 3B, public hearing for the 2015 draft general plan adoption resolution number 4923-1502, adopting the 2015 general plan, calling a special election for voter ratification of the plan, and setting the ballot language.
George, get up here.
Thank you, Mayor. So your agenda items today include conducting a public hearing, taking any public comment that may occur, and then adopting a resolution. And I'll go through the various steps as part of that, but if you will indulge me a moment, there are a number of clarifications that I think are helpful if we talk about the modifications that you heard and reviewed during your last meeting relating to the land use plan. There was an article in the local newspaper, a couple of the items that they quoted in that particular article, I think, require some clarification, and I'll touch on those. And then there are two map amendments that are relatively minor, but significant for you to understand before you go ahead with the adoption of the resolution after the public hearing.
Are they all in the book?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So one of the things that was pointed out in the newspaper article, and I don't have an overhead for this one, was in the headline, there was a quote saying that there were 2,500 acres of properties being added to the general plan's land use map, and that is incorrect. There are a number of acres of property that are being modified by the adoption of the new plan map, but they are included and were covered by general plan land uses already existing, carried over from the 2003 land use map. So that, that area was not new. It was displayed to you on a map similar to this one, and I'm going to modify this location slightly. Here we go. These areas were covered by the existing land use map in 2003. They're being proposed for modification. The modifications were explained to you at the last workshop meeting last week, last Tuesday. And we'd be happy to talk about any portions of that if you desire to do so, but we did want to just point that out. Most of the areas where changes occurred to the residential went from a very low density, which is less than a unit per acre, to low to medium density. Those are, those density ranges actually cover all of the city's residential zoning categories, except for one, which is the RE2 acre, which requires two acres per lot. And we have very little of that in town. So it actually brings it in line with most of our zoning to convert it to, the color shown on here is sort of a yellow color.
I have a question.
Sir?
City manager, do those properties in question that George is talking about, do they already have water allotments?
Well, let's, let's start with that one right there. That property is owned by Depot Ranch. That property is included within a pre-annexation development agreement, and that pre-annexation development agreement was accompanied by a water settlement agreement. So Depot Ranch has the ability to apply water that they have, they're, they're entitled to on that property.
And the reason why I bring this up, based upon going back to that article again, that those water allotments have already been in place, and it's simply a change of, of zoning.
Yeah. Now, we can talk about the other properties indicated on the map, the northeast property. There is no pre-annexation development agreement for any of that property, so there has been no water allocation made. I think much, if not most, of that property, perhaps even all of that, I guess all of that property is outside the city limits.
It is at present.
At present. And so in order to be brought into the city limits, that would require a pre-annexation development agreement. And as you know very well, because of the size of that, that would be a Prop 400 annexation. And so there, there is a long list of criteria which would have to be met, among other things, water availability. And certainly, the, the city has made no representation that it has water available to provide and contract for in a pre-annexation development agreement. The other property, which is owned by Arizona Eco Development, which George is pointing to, is, I believe, also outside the city limits.
That's correct.
It would require annexation, again, a pre-annexation agreement. The distinction with property number three, if you will, however, is that, as Mr. Geese pointed out last week, April 7th, I guess it was the, the general plan meeting, they have surface water rights on Watson Lake. And so they are in the process of converting those surface water rights, what we, through what we call a sever and transfer process, where they would then provide those water rights to, to the city of Prescott. And of course, that transfer of water rights and the application of that water would then be handled within, again, a pre-annexation development agreement. So, you know, I think George has, has certainly commented that some clarification was necessary. He has provided that clarification. I would also make an important distinction between planning and actual annexation and development. And so this is a meeting today regarding the general plan, the future land use map, which is a planning document. That does not lock in water availability. That does not bring in annexation. Those are separate processes, those are contractual agreements, annexation procedures, and so forth. So this is a planning exercise today. It is not a, an annexation or creation of entitlements process.
Thank you for that clarification.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Craig, along those lines, what is the net effect of the amended map? If it's put into the plan and it's approved by the voters, what is the net effect?
Well, if, if you're asking me, it is, it is basically a depiction of future land use that in the event that the property was brought into the city, it provides guidance for what the land uses would be.
It, it helps the city during the annexation process, or during the negotiations of a pre-annexation agreement, determine which zoning districts to apply to that land once it's been annexed into the city. It is, it's a guide for future zoning.
Okay. Let me ask you a question now that you've said that. Because it's in the county, and because normally when something is annexed into the city, it is annexed into like annexation elements from the county.
Right, equivalent to the county's existing zoning.
Is this to help us through that process at the beginning?
It, it's very unusual for property to be annexed in from the county and stay at that equivalent zoning that's established at the time of annexation. During a pre-annexation agreement, or subsequent to an annexation, you almost always have a rezoning to some other land uses. And those rezonings to other land uses are controlled by and guided by the land use map and the general plan.
Well, I appreciate it, because a lot of times we get chastised for not having a long-range plan. And in fact, it is a plan, it is a long-range plan, and I think it's important.
Thank you.
And if I, Mayor, if I could, Mayor and Council, if I could just make one further point, and, and this is consistent with what we've said before. You certainly had, did receive an update on the city's water portfolio in January of We, during the, I guess it was on the 24th, perhaps, the 24th of March, you received an update of that water portfolio as it pertains to the general plan. And my recollection is that there have been statements made that the city simply does not have the water to support large-scale annexations, which are not presently a matter of contractual agreement. There is no point in annexing property into the city if we do not have the, the water to serve that. Now, you know, I, I guess I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So we only have so much water. We have more land already inside the city, or contemplated through development agreement, pre-annexation development agreement with Depot Ranch. We're going to have more developable land than we will have the water to build out at the zoning which exists or will exist. So we are not in the, in the annexation business of large tracts that, that, for which we would have to provide water that we simply do not have.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your clarification on that, Mr. McConnell. Fact of the matter is, if we annex somebody into the city without the ability to provide the services, at that point, that could be considered a taking, knowing full well that we don't have the water. And now they can't develop to a right that they have in the county by county standard. You know, we ran into a problem similar to that with Mullen Way. And unless we could find somebody to de-annex them to, we could be held accountable on that. John, would you weigh in on that? I mean, we can't just go out and willy-nilly annex large tracts of land, knowing full well we don't have the ability to supply the basic services.
Well, I think the point that I've heard is that any of these, to the extent these large tracts are annexed into the city, they're going to have to be able to bring their own water to the table. Otherwise, there's no point in annexing them, because the city can't provide the water to those. And from what I'm hearing, all of these three, well, at least two of the three already have, or are planning to have the, the water to, to provide for whatever proposed development, the third tract-
The third track on the northeast is going to have to essentially bring water to the table as part of a pre-annexation development agreement, which would lay out all of the things that have to happen, A, prior to the city annexing in the parcel, and B, prior to, and would happen sort of back-to-back, rezoning the property to whatever the, whether it's PAD or some mixed-use type, you know, type development if it's all rezoned at one time. And also just note that the, from what, just to reiterate what George Worley just said, is that the residential part of the map is really any or all of the city's resident, includes all of the city's residential zoning designations, other than the two-acre lots. So, essentially, to sort of deem this as going from low density to high density is just not accurate. It's going from two-acre lots to essentially any of the other allowable residential zonings under the city's land development code. So, to the extent that a rezoning has to comply with the land development element of the, of the general plan, that allows, you know, the city to rezone that, really to any of the city's zoning, residential zoning designations, other than the two-acre lot. But that's all going to come as part of the pre-annexation development agreement, presumably.
Okay. Jane.
George, just before the meeting, I pointed out to you what I thought was an omission in the translation from the general plan map that was reviewed by the committee and Planning and Zoning Commission, and the alternate that was presented to the council by AED last week, and I wonder if you could address that.
Yes, ma'am. We found, Councilwoman Wilcox found an omission that was left off of our map. It was actually the planning department that's taking responsibility for leaving that off of the map. Here is a wash that was shown on the 2003 land use map, right here, that fell off of our revision of that map. We inserted the new proposed land uses over top of the previous land uses, and it covered it up. So, it's a technical omission. We're proposing that if you adopt the general plan through your resolution today, that it is with the understanding that that was a correction that should have been made and would be included in your map. I also have one other map-related thing that we wanted to talk to you about before you get into any further adoption. The general plan includes the latest edition of the Wild and Urban Interface Map. That map is actually corrected and adopted by a later item on your agenda today. So, our assumption is that when you adopt item F, which is the new building and fire codes, this map is actually part of one of those codes, so we're presuming that you adopt those. Should you not adopt those codes later, this map would be replaced with the existing map instead.
George, question.
Sir.
And I haven't looked yet. Did we not ask you to also put in the general plan the map with the somewhat agreed-to future limits of the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Chino Valley, that subsequent council, our previous council, had put into some type of an effect that we do have boundaries that will be honored by all three communities?
You did, sir, and we've added it to this map, and I apologize for the colors on the overhead, but if you look at the actual map, it's very bright. This line is that agreed-upon boundary. So, it is shown on the general plan's regional jurisdiction map for clarification, and I will point out that that exact line is shown in Prescott Valley's general plan.
Yeah.
And it was their recommendation that we included on this map to correspond to the map that they have in their plan.
Yeah. Sometimes I think maybe there's confusion that we're right away, that that fill-in is going to, is going to happen. This, that, again, that line is something that could be 10, 20, could be 50 years in the future, depending on water availability.
That's correct.
But it would be appropriate in the future, if and when that growth occurs, that that would be in the city of Prescott.
Up to that point in the line, it is presumed that we will annex our side of it at some point in the future.
Okay.
And they will annex their side of it at some point in the future.
Right. But in the meantime, it's in the county.
Neither community is required to do that.
Yeah. But in the meantime, it's in the county.
That is correct.
And it is subject to development in the county, to county standards. So, at any moment in time that the developers wanted to develop that property with county standards, they could break it up into two-acre parcels, allow the applicant to put a well and a septic system, and it could be developed just in a different form of what it would be developed if it was in the city.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Lindsay, you sure picked a seat in the back.
I bet you thought I was done with all my comments on the general plan. These are actually comments that I have made earlier to the general plan committee and to planning and zoning. I didn't emphasize them so much in the public hearings before the council, but I want to address the question of annexations. In the 2003 plan, land use element, the committee and the plan suggested the need to undertake a review of city annexation policies. The city does have and adopted annexation policy that's been on the books since about 1994, about 20 years. In 2003, there were several possible large annexations that were anticipated that would come about over the subsequent years, and that was also the impetus for coming to a boundary agreement with Chino Valley and Prescott Valley, and that same boundary agreement was reflected on the plans in 2003. The annexation policy for the city, again, I would urge that we review that, because the policy basically suggests that annexations will have a main objective to annex property with actual or potential commercial or industrial uses. And I'm quoting directly from the city's annexation policy. There have been several examples of annexations and development which have come in since that policy was developed, which are inconsistent with that established policy. The policy very much emphasizes commercial or industrial uses, and it goes on to say that land that is primarily suitable for residential development is discouraged from annexations unless annexing those parcels furthers some other goal that the city has and so forth. But we've had a couple of large annexations in the last 10 years that are mostly residential suitable, which is directly conflicts with the city's annexation policy. So, I think it's time to have a discussion about the annexation policy and see if those factors were, are still in place that would suggest to put the priority in annexations on commercial and industrial land uses. As far as this request that came in from a developer to change the land use map, I would suggest that the city needs to look at that and think about it before adopting that, and this is aside from all the water considerations, because clearly, people will need to bring water with them in order to develop, particularly to develop residentially. But the way annexation works, and this is under state law, when you annex a parcel, it has to come in under the zoning that is closest to the existing zoning out in the county, which for most of these properties that we're talking about, those three different parcels, is going to be two, two units per acre, or one unit per two acre, anyway, a very low-density zoning. And then, once the property comes in at that zoning, as George was saying, you almost immediately have an application to rezone and change the zoning designation to something that is consistent with city zoning code. The land use map guides that. What the developer that came in and suggested some changes to the land use map, he was essentially requesting some increases in density of the residential portions, and that could end up being a de facto upzoning, because if and when they come into the city and get annexed in, and then come to the city for a rezoning to an existing zoning code, the land use map will allow a more intense density than the land use map that was with the general plan that was vetted all the way through the process until last week. I don't, you know, personally, I don't think it's a good idea to, to allow that de facto upzoning without a more thorough discussion of what is appropriate, particularly those parcels that are real close to the airport. And in the general plan draft, you do have a strategy that's in the land use section, and it's part of the business and commercial and industrial uses section, but the strategy is to establish an airport area commercial slash employment zoning district, which does not permit residential uses, to assure commercial land availability in close proximity to the airport. That would seem to conflict with the anticipated uses for that parcel if and when it does get annexed and comes into the city.
Yeah. Can I, can I comment, and then you can continue on? The, and conversations have been held, and it's pretty well acknowledged that commercial will follow rooftops, particularly in areas that are, have no density at all now. So, you have to have a market for the product or services before the commercial will follow. And I think that's where, at least I've been looking for the last five, six years, in the airport area, is that, that we have to have the rooftops, and some will be sprouting in the very near future, which will start to create the need for commercial enterprises. And that's kind of the way I've looked at it. Now, density and water, maybe there's opportunities through multi-zoning and that use less water. We know that, that a duplex will use less water than two single-family, and an apartment unit will use less water per unit than single-family residences. So, all of these really tie together if you give them a chance. This is my opinion. I know there is things in the works for commercial opportunities in the airport area, but you also have to look at what residential does to the airport if it's too close. So, all of, all of these things have been talked about, and maybe we've not did the best job in explaining it, but it really does tie together. And then, the water allocation procedures, that you had to have residential, and then part of the residential was devoted to the commercial that would be served by that residential, and that's why commercial many times doesn't, unless it's, it's high use, doesn't require a water allocation. So, I think you're right on target. It's just maybe we've not explained it as well as we could, and, and just because of the way the government operates, we can't share everything that is discussed, because in the early stages, many times, it really doesn't make sense. But I believe that the staff has done a good job in tying all of these future things together, and we know where the, the proper commercial area will be in that area, and I think that we'll see that opportunity start to develop when there's enough rooftops that will, will support some type of a commercial business. And George and Craig, you can certainly expand on this, but...
Well, very briefly, Mayor, the cabin annexation at Granite Hills Parkway in 89A that was zero, that was a major annexation, Prop. 400 annexation was zero residential. That was all commercial industrial. And the North Airport annexation area, commercial and industrial. And the land use map for the West, West Airport, pre-annexation development agreement, substantial commercial and development. The Fan property, low-density residential with industrial up at the north, along the north boundary. So, I think that actually, if you, if you look at each of those annexations, and George and Tom, you're the, you're the professional planners here, but I believe that the city count, the city of Prescott is well-equipped in terms of future land use to meet commercial, industrial, and residential. You know, we, we have not focused, and I certainly agree with Ms. Bell, that we might update the annexation policy, and candidly, if we're going to update it today, I would say do away with it, because we're not going to have very many new annexations, and what we've got, we've got more land and of the different commercial, industrial, residential, than we're going to have water. So, I think it's a point well-taken. I think there's a benefit in the discussion, but I think the future land use is certainly appropriate as it relates to all of those land use categories.
More, more, your turn again.
I would again reiterate, as your city manager just suggested, it's definitely time to review the annexation policy, look at the reasons that it was written the way it was, see if those reasons continue to be valid, and if not, modify it and go forward. I just don't like to see us proceeding with annexations that conflict with the existing policy. I don't think that's good policy to do that. And I kind of disagree with you in terms of that you have to have rooftops before you have the commercial. There certainly is a tie-in between rooftops and retail commercial, but there's not as strong a tie-in between rooftops and industrial or the more intense commercial, like manufacturing or whatever. Those are some of the uses that are appropriate around the airport, and in terms of rooftops, if there is a tie-in there, it doesn't, those rooftops don't necessarily have to be within the city limits of Prescott, because there's a regional market, particularly when we're talking about the more intense commercial retail development. But I don't see much relationship between rooftops and manufacturing or industrial uses particularly.
Well, unless you looked at, the folks that work in those places have to have a place to live. And today, if we truly believe in the, the new buzzword of live, work, and play, if that is the area that we hope to be successful in bringing job creation, we also would like to have them live as close as possible, because with a golf course and some other opportunities in Pioneer Park, the recreation side of it is there also. So, you know, we talk so much about workforce housing and affordable housing and all those things, but those have got to be built yet, and then where do we put them? I'd like to see them put as close as they could be to the jobs that are created for them. So, that's just the difference of opinion.
I would certainly agree with you on that, Mayor, and we do have substantial areas that are, have existing zoning that have not been developed, that where we could have some more rooftops and in particular, address the needs for workforce housing and so forth. But if you change this map, you are, again, in my opinion, a de facto upzoning, because when the annexation comes, comes to the city, and then the subsequent rezoning application, it will be based on the land uses in this land use map.
Yeah.
And if you move it from what it was, low-density residential to medium residential or medium to high residential, the guidance for that process will mean more units per acre.
Okay. Well, we could disagree just a little bit, couldn't we? Okay.
Mayor?
You know, and it's not the first time we've disagreed, Mayor.
I know, that's... Steve, thanks, Lindsay.
I'm going to have to say, I think that's the correct direction of planning the future for the area. The bottom line is... The bottom line is, just because the county does not have a zoning segment that's smaller than a two-acre minimum, I would hate to think that we would have urban sprawl just based upon what, what Lindsey's talking about. The bottom line is, we need to do what's right for the area at the given time when it's brought in for annexation. If it means six units per acre or eight units per acre, that becomes affordable, that becomes what's selling, that becomes the, the thing of the day. And the thing of the day, in my opinion, is not wildcat subdivision, two-acre minimums in the county that aren't regulated by any water source, have independent wells and septic systems that are polluting our aquifer, and we have no control over that. Personally, I would rather, as a councilperson, to have control over that area and that destiny when it comes in for annexation.
Well, I think you have some agreement there. Gene, you want to say something? Or are you just thinking about it?
Well, I was just thinking about it. I agree with Steve, though I would much rather see this area be annexed into the city in a well-planned manner. And I, I understand the upzoning idea, but it, it looks appropriate to me. We're getting a lot more commercial employment area around the airport, which is where we want it.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else?
Mayor, I just have one comment. You know, when we talk about annexations and we look at projects that are coming in and the comment about, you know, almost immediately after it's annexed, there's the rezoning that happens. You know, I remember in some of the previous app annexations, there was a lot of conversation about, well, somebody came in, said they were going to do one thing, and then immediately changed. And when we're looking at the cost-benefit analysis and we're really taking the analytical approach to what is coming into the city, what is the benefit to the city for that to happen? My general feeling is it's better for it to be out there sooner and something for people to mull over, ask the property owners about, understand the issue, and ultimately make a decision whether this plan and this map is something that shows the future of Prescott or if we need to reconsider it. Generally speaking, I think most of it conforms with the concept, does expand the industrial and commercial land in and around the airport area. Yes, there is the issue about the higher-density residential. There's no doubt about that. But at the same time, I think likely you would see a PAD in some of these areas if you look at the topo maps. And it's going to be the reality of an annexation. I'd rather it be upfront and everybody know what to expect than something happened and all of a sudden, it's a sleight-of-hand type situation.
Yeah. Anyone else in the public? Dan?
Well, I was going to speak a minute for...
Tell us who you are.
Yeah. I'm Daniel Mattson. She was talking about the development of residential properties around the airport. And I referenced 7.8, and it, at Strategy 1.2, for instance, talks about the airport-specific area plan and the airport master plan. And if you look at that map, and if you've been to the meetings and seen that master plan, you'll realize that their proposed residential area does not fall in any of the, the flyover zones. So the, the map amendment as proposed by the developer fits perfectly into the airport master plan and the area-specific plan. And because what it does is you, you have your safety zone extends out along the runway. And it kind of has a cone, a second cone. And if you follow that out, the residential area is not conflicting with the airport plan at all. So that's good. The other thing, the, the developer, again, if you're here for all the meetings, you find these things out, what he was trying to do is, in order to include the change in this plan at this point in time, it's relatively easy for everybody to do, does not take a bunch of additional public meetings. So they, they acquired title to the land recently, came to the game before hitting the point where this gets locked in. So this is actually an effort to save effort in the long run by including these changes now as we adopt the plan instead of waiting until after it goes to the voter and then have to make, make a proposal for a map amendment. This is actually the easier way to accomplish it. And so he did a very good job of explaining everything, including the fact that they proposed bringing with them their water rights, which is more water rights than they'll be using. So the city comes out ahead if this annexation is made. So besides the idea of being able to regulate it, being able to take the effluent back to our treatment plant and use it as the city desires to use it, I think this map amendment is a very good thing. Would have been nice to have it earlier, but he explained why he didn't bring it earlier. So, and other than that, I'm looking forward to this going forward. I've been involved since, what, May, the middle of May 2011? And I think we're about ready to send this to the voters.
Thank you. Your turn.
Hi. I'm Sandra Smith, 701 White Spar. Basically, Dan just covered most of what I was thinking about. The only other thing is, I grew up on, around Kennedy. That was idly wild back then. And I remember when they first started to expand the airport, and the housing had encroached in so far that they were literally right on the ends of the runway when they finally got done with the expansion. So what I'm looking at, I see your takeoff pattern, but what about your approach pattern? How does that work? Because if you get housing under the approach pattern, it's just as dangerous.
So part of our problem there is that there are existing subdivisions that have been there for years and years. In fact, they predated annexation into the city, Penon Oaks being one of them. But if you go a little further past there, you've got a large open space area that's in line with that runway approach. And there was a study done a few years ago on the airport and the actual zones of potential impact, and typically noise impact type of situations.
Yeah, noise impact is a good one.
So those areas actually were modified through an agreement with the property owner, DeWol Ranches, to modify the general plan to include that area as industrial or commercial to avoid having residential in close proximity.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about.
Anyone else? Yes, come on up. Good afternoon.
Richard Stillman, Sequoia Drive, Prescott. Mayor, you, you were talking about two-acre plots that would include a septic field. I can't think of anything, looking backwards, like a septic field. That, that's just, it's wrong. We have a lot of communities right here in Prescott that would love to be on city waistline. And we're going to have a waste treatment plant right next to the airport. So the run of a, of a waste treatment line to these areas, and this might be 20, 30 years out, but still, I can't imagine anyone developing a two-acre plot with a septic field in this day and age. There's, it's all negative. We know it's going to go into the ground and where from there, it, it just, it's going to create a problem. We know it's going to create a problem. I wouldn't allow it under any circumstances. I can see that the city manager made a good point about water supply. Well, I'm too new to talk about that. I don't know enough about that. But I do know that the waistline, we can get involved. It is county property now, but if it's city property, I think we should demand that there be a waistline there that these future communities could hook up to because they're going to have to face that sooner or later down the road anyway. So I just think it's, you know, it's a topic, and I would strongly consider it in the future.
Yeah. Well, it, if we accomplish that through annexation, that's, that's one thing. Otherwise, it would have to be an agreement. Because if we do not have adequate water to annex the area and provide the, for the development...
Yeah.
Then we don't have much to say about the effluent side. But I can assure you, the city would love to have the effluent...
Yeah.
Even if we didn't have...
Sure.
...the water supply.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, to that point, there's a developer talking about acquiring some property over near the Dells that has no desire to annex into the city, wants to maximize under the county zoning, put in shared wells and septic tanks. And, you know, when he was approached about, would he be interested in being in the city? He said no, because he doesn't want to install those utilities.
Meet, meet those requirements. Anyone else? Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I ask one question? Just kind of off the subject of everything, but, you know, I know Daniel spoke on this, and did we ever put, give him any kind of credit in this general plan? He showed up at every meeting for the last three, four years.
Well within council's authority to do so.
I'd like to suggest that if council would be agreeable to that.
You know, we did in the resolution, I think the committee, we added Daniel Mattson.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. The public hearing has been closed. Now we need a motion to adopt Resolution Number 4293-1502.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 4293-1502 with the alternate map as corrective.
Okay. Second. Does that, that give the language that you need?
The resolution number, I think, is 4923. There may be a typo in the, oh, there is.
Agenda.
Agenda is. So I'll just check with the clerk. Is the actual number on, this is the correct number on the resolution itself, 4923?
Yes.
Okay. So it's 4923-1502.
So we need to correct it to...
No, it's, it's clear.
Okay. And will Gene's language suffice for the corrections?
Just before we vote on Gene's motion, can we vote on the other?
On which?
Closing the public hearing. We never voted.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thanks.
Motion made, seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Now...
Do you want me to repeat the motion?
Let's try it again.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution Number 4923-1502 with the alternate map as corrected.
Second.
Okay.
And just for clarification, the land use map is what you're talking about.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
All of you that spent a lot of hours and days helping the city with this general plan, we, we really thank you because it's been about three years of hard work. And so take that as a thank you from the entire city. Okay, Item C.
Item 3C, adoption of Resolution Number 4289-1498, providing notice of the primary and general elections to be held on August 25, 2015, and November 3, 2015, and authorizing the city clerk to enter into agreements as required to provide election services for the 2015 primary and general elections. Mayor and council, the Prescott City Charter and the Arizona Revised Statutes provide for the holding of a city primary election on Tuesday, August 25, 2015, and the general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2015, in order to elect three council members and a mayor. The proposed resolution formally calls both of these elections as vote-by-mail and authorizes the city clerk to enter into agreements with the Yavapai County Elections Department and any necessary vendors to provide election services. Costs associated with the election include the payment of services to have Yavapai County conduct the 2015 elections for the city. And then other costs include vendor services for printing, labeling, mailing of pre-election postcards, printing of ballots, and the preparation, printing and labeling of mailing of publicity pamphlet. And then with that, I'm happy, happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? Comments, questions, public? Okay, do we have a...
Mayor?
An action?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 4289-1498.
Second. Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, Item D.
Item 3D, approval to file a notice of appeal for the Watson Lake Total Maximum Daily Load, TMDL, issued by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADEQ.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last week, on April 7, a presentation was made of the history and the current regulatory activities pertaining to the Watson Lake Total Maximum Daily Load, TMDL. The presentation followed recent public notice of the TMDL found report by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality in the Arizona Administrative Registry on March 6, 2015. If the city chooses to appeal the TMDL, it must do so no later than April 20, 2015. Briefly in summary, the Watson Lake was determined to be impaired for total nitrogen, dissolved oxygen, pH, and total phosphorus. Recent regulatory activities date back to the early 2000s. However, while the reservoir was under the ownership of Chino Valley Irrigation District, the district and others in the community had similar assessments and actions with the Arizona Department of Health Services. This was in the late 1980s. Recall, historically, the water supply in the reservoir was intended to serve agriculture in Chino Valley. In 1998, the city acquired the Watson Lake and Willa Lake reservoirs when the Prescott Active Management Area was declared to be out-of-state field in accordance with State Title 45 waters. These water supplies became regulated by the Arizona Department of Water Resources through a decision and order of assured water supply. A portion of the surface water supplies have already been committed to existing residential uses through recharge and recovery. The city retained AMEC Foster Wheeler AMEC for technical assistance near the timeframe that the draft TMDL and supporting studies were being prepared for release. City personnel with AMEC have followed the science closely, reviewed ADEQ initial recommendations, and responded within the initial state of Arizona outlined public comment period. During last week's presentation, issues were outlined that are consistent with the city's comments from their initial comment period, which was in April 2014. The city remains concerned that ADEQ has not succinctly stated how this TMDL will be used in a regulatory manner for compliance in relation to permits currently held by the city or as they may be updated in the future. Watershed and reservoir health is of interest to everyone, so please understand by the city seeking this appeal, there is no intent for a no-action alternative. Thank you for your time today, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
John, you need to add anything to that?
No, Mayor. Unless there's any questions.
I just have one comment to make, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I just have one comment.
Oh, go.
I think the appeal is appropriate, but I don't want this action to be taken as a sign that the city is trying to avoid any responsibility for doing what's best for the lakes and cleaning up, finding the right point where it needs to be cleaned up. I think that's what we're all looking for. What is the scientific basis and, and how do we do it?
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Need a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the notice of appeal for the Watson Lake Total Maximum Daily Load issued by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Item E, we're finally going to get around to spend some money.
Item 3E, approval amendment number one to city contract number 2012-225A1 with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated for design and post-design services for the Small Water Main Replacement Project, Dexter Neighborhood, Phase 3, in an amount not to exceed $380,000, $380,490.
Good afternoon, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Steve Oros, Public Works Department. The agenda item here before you this afternoon is an amendment to contract that we have with Granite Basin Engineering for the Small Water Main Replacement Project. This agreement includes both design and post-design efforts. Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Small Water Main Replacement Project was adopted by the city council in June of 2012. In that original contract, it, it allowed for this third phase to be set to go to Granite Basin, assuming they met all the performance criteria which they have. This portion of the project contains about 7,900 lineal feet of 6-inch water main and removal of nearly 9,700 linear feet of 2-inch water main, which is a very small water main that we have maintenance issues with. The preliminary construction cost estimate for the project is just over $2.1 million. The design portion of the contract is about 14%, which is a little bit on the high side. But given the complexity of the project, the small water mains experience that we've had, and a, almost 200 parcels that are going to have water mains changed around, we, staff feels that the design fee is appropriate for this level of project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, not a question necessarily on the project, but, you know, when I saw the, the dollar amount, and it was $380,000, and is there, is there any way to somehow get some competition into this kind of process? I know we just look for engineering firms that are qualified or they satisfy our needs or whatever, but is there any way to get them bidding against each other to maybe get that price, you know, get them to sharpen their pencil? And, and I'm not saying anything Granite Basin Engineering, I'm not saying anything against them. It was just when I saw a dollar amount that high and know that there was no real bidding process on that, maybe that's just the way we have to do things, but you're nodding.
Well, and Steve can probably address it better than I can, but state law and bidding requirements as far as professional services, we're not allowed to actually do price bidding. You have to choose them based on qualification, those kinds of things. Once the successful proposal is accepted, then you sort of negotiate the price, which doesn't require the city to proceed forward if the price is too high. We've obviously canceled proposals before when... We've obviously canceled proposals before when the most successful or the highest rated proposer comes in with a price that's just too high, but we're not tactically allowed to do price bids on professional services.
And we do review the proposals very closely, and when we see the cost, initial cost from a consultant, we do have conversations with them and make sure the understanding of the scope and level of efforts are consistent, and we do negotiate the price to a favorable outcome for the city.
Sure. And you know, because I was just looking at some of the things on here, and you know, we got $10,000 for reimbursable expenses, $10,000 for subcontractor contingency, and $10,000 for, excuse me, $18,000 for city contingency. And you know, it just seems like if you can pit two people or two firms against each other, maybe you could half those or, you know, those kind of prices. And that, I'm done talking. Like I said, nothing against Granite Basin, just when I see those kind of things, if it was my dollars, I'd question it.
Chris, in the private sector, we have, and they're about the same. There's very little difference in it, so.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Chris, just along those lines, you know, this would be a project that I think would fall very well under an on-call engineering contract with multiple engineering firms. Makes them really competitive upfront, and it eliminates a lot of the staff time, but looking forward to see Granite Basin's work on this. You know, this is a good continuation of their existing contract.
Steve, just a comment. We've been doing a lot of sidewalk work...
Yes.
...in that neighborhood. Does this mean we get to break them up and start over again?
Yeah, we like to do that first. We like to break up the sidewalk before we do the water line. No, we are working on both the sidewalks and the water lines and the roads in the Dexter Neighborhood.
Okay. Very good. Comments from the public? Questions? Okay, have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to approve amendment 1 to city contract number 2012-225A1 with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated for design and post-design services of the Small Water Main Replacement Project Dexter Neighborhood Phase III in an amount not to exceed $380,490.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item F.
Item 3F, I'll read the title, and then I'll read the title of the ordinances that are being proposed. Item 3F, amendments to the 2012 International Building Codes, Fire Codes, and Local Amendments. Ordinance number 4928-1466, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title III of the city code of the city of Prescott by repealing Section 3-17-2 and adopting a new Section 3-17-2 by reference adopting that certain document entitled 2015 Changes to the City of Prescott 2012 Administrative Building Code Amendments, which was made a public record by resolution number 4285-1494 and providing penalties. Ordinance number 4929-1467, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title III, Chapter 1 of the city code of the city of Prescott entitled International Building Code by repealing Section 3-1-2 and adopting a new Section 3-1-2, adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2015 Changes to the City of Prescott 2012 International Building Code Amendments, which is made a public record by resolution number 4286-1495 and providing penalties. Ordinance number 4930-1468, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title III, Chapter 8 of the city code of the city of Prescott entitled International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwelling by repealing Section 3-8-2 and adopting a new Section 3-8-2 by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2015 Changes to the City of Prescott 2012 International Residential Code and One and Two Family Dwelling Amendments, which was made a public record by resolution number 4287-1496 and providing penalties therefor. Ordinance number 4231-1469, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title VI, Chapter 1 of the city code of the city of Prescott entitled International Fire Code and adopting by reference that certain document entitled the 2012 International Fire Code, which document was made a public record by resolution number 4288-1497 and also adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2015 Changes to the City of Prescott 2014 Amendments to the 2012 International Fire Code, which document was made a public record by resolution number 4288-1497. Ordinance number 4932-1470, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title VI, Chapter 2 of the city code of the city of Prescott entitled Wildland Urban Interface Code and adopting by reference that certain document entitled the 2012 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, which document was made a public record by resolution number 4291-1500 and also adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2015 Changes to the City of Prescott 2014 Amendments to the 2012 International Wild Urban Interface Code, which document was made a public record by resolution number 4291-1500.
Can you repeat that, Dana?
I was going to say, glad I didn't have to read that.
Randy, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today along with Don Devendore, our fire marshal, with a few housekeeping items to the codes, the 2012 IRC, IVC, admin, along with the fire code and the wildland code. These codes were adopted and placed in January of this year, and we have a few housekeeping items. Some of the changes were made to meet the land development code and to update the wildland map that was just placed. We provided staff report and the strike-through on the ordinances, so if you have any questions, me and Don are here to answer them.
Mayor, my only question is for the attorney. It indicates on one, separate motions required on each item, and the other one, it doesn't.
No, you have to... There should be 10...
Motion.
10 votes.
Okay.
One for each five resolutions, five ordinances, sorry.
Super.
We just can't see what Dana said. So, there will be separate votes on each other?
There are separate motions, but it's the short form here, not the whole title.
Okay.
Unless Dana wants to read again.
Counsel.
Randy, I assume contractors have looked at it, no comments. Correct. Okay.
When do we get our first letter?
Tomorrow.
Comments from the public?
Mayor, I'm willing to take this one on, and we can do a rapid fire. You ready?
You're our fast guy, anyway.
Move to adopt resolution number 4285-1494.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4928-1466.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt resolution number 4286-1495.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4929-1467.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt resolution number 4287-1496.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4930-1468.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt resolution number 4288-1497.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4931-1469.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt resolution number 4291-1500.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Move to adopt an ordinance number 4932-1470.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Boom.
Thank you.
Randy, just before you leave, thank you very much for working with the development community and the contractors.
Yeah.
Thank you for working with those folks. I sat through many of your meetings on UDC, and you worked well on behalf of the citizens of Prescott. Thank you. Along with Fire Marshal Devendore.
Thanks, Randy. Okay, item G.
Item 3G, approval of a downtown management agreement with the Prescott Downtown Partnership, PDP, for fiscal year 2015 through 2017, city contract number 2015-0108, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Don.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a downtown management agreement between the Prescott Downtown Partnership and the city of Prescott. This item was originally presented to you on March 10, but has since been revised to exclude the banner program pending further review. With that, if you have any questions for me, or Kendall Jasperz is here, and I believe almost his entire board of directors.
Charlie.
Mayor, when we... This item last came to us, Jean and I were asked to meet with staff and with the PDP representatives to address the banner issue.
Right.
And basically, I'm satisfied with what we're doing today. It's leaving the door open to continue the conversation on the banner program and refine that. So, I think we've addressed the concern by excluding that portion at this point.
When... What's your thoughts on moving forward on it as far as the timeline?
You know, we left the... We left the meeting needing to do some additional research because there's just significant issues about banners in public places and constitutional rights. And so, I know the legal department and the city manager's office with tourism are going to work on looking at other municipalities to see what they're doing, and then bring back a recommendation. Certainly, I think it's a good program. We just want to make sure we don't do anything we shouldn't. So, couple months likely.
Okay. Craig, maybe you'll have to answer this. I see Tom and George live. The banner portion of our sign code that allows businesses to put up temporary banners? Thanks, Allen.
Coming from the second row.
How does... Is there any...
Mayor Kirkendall, there are a couple of sections of city codes that reference offsite signage, signage in the city right of way, and then also there are some specific exemptions and/or requirements in certain districts around town, for example, the downtown area. And so, one of the things that we would want to do as part of that review and refinement is to make sure that if there is any conflict or perceived conflict within the existing sign references of the city code, that those are addressed so that it is clear that for this particular banner program in the downtown area on the antique light posts through this banner program, that either it is exempt from, or there are the very specific restrictions on those uses. So, there's not confusion where an individual might see conflicts in the code and utilize that to gain signage.
Okay. That's kind of where I wanted to come from. Chris.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to say, you know, I'm PDP, I'm the liaison to them from the council, and this money comes from the TAC, which is collected from the bed tax. It's $20,000, and if we had to hire someone to do all the things that PDP does with us to liaison with the downtown businesses, it would cost us a lot, lot more than this. I think using the PDP for 20 grand is a heck of a bargain, and I'd like to support this.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo my fellow councilmen's sentiments on this. The value we get for the 20,000 is immeasurable. Being in business as many years as I've been, this isn't a time to cut marketing strategies to keep the downtown vibrant. That's the cultural center of our community.
Do you want to up it a little bit?
I didn't say that, Mayor.
Anyone else, counsel? Jean? Steve? Public? Comments? You want to just be quiet and get it over with?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve city contract number 2015-108 with the Prescott Downtown Partnership.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item H.
Item 3H, award of city contract number 2015-134 to Clean Air Concepts in the amount of $69,729.25 for furnishing and installing vertical airflow exhaust removal systems in the five city-owned fire stations, general fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're before you this afternoon to seek your approval to proceed with the purchase and installation of a vertical airflow system within our fire stations. Back of the spring of last year, we had some air monitoring performed, and our current system that is in place through passive measures and mechanical means, both were deemed efficient at the time, but they were running on the edge of efficiency. Most of this equipment is 22 to 30 years old, and with that, they've just outlived their usefulness. The items that we're looking for basically will equip the fire stations with a minimum of six air exchanges per hour. That's to ensure not only that the air is brought in from the outside that is fresh, but also to filter out the particulates that are involved with our diesel exhaust systems within our operating stuff. It's very hard to move a fire truck out of a station without starting the truck at some point within the station. This allows those air exchanges to take place. There were four responsive bidders. The first one, however, was based upon four air exchanges per hour. Therefore, it was not deemed appropriate. We wanted a minimum of six air exchanges per hour. None of these are local providers. However, we have had some conversation that they will use local resources for the installation of these particular mechanical means, in specifically a Prescott contractor for that purpose. Project was included in the capital budget in the amount of $160,000. We seem to have perhaps over-gestimated, I guess, when we went forward on the capital improvement. However, we are also seeking, prior to the installation, to allow us to paint and refresh the inside, because to put new exhaust system filtration in there without doing something with the high bays and the exhaust fumes that are already built up on the walls really becomes pointless. So, we're looking for that also within this. And with that, I'd be honored to entertain any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Chief, so just to be clear, in this situation, these exchanges are going through a filter, but it's not going to be basically replacing all of the air every time?
That is correct. It filters the air, it takes out the particulate matter through basically a scrubber system, therefore minimizing the exposure to our men and women in and out of the fire station.
And then, as you just indicated, you're going to be coming back with cleaning up the existing exhaust buildup that's in place?
Actually, that's within this particular scope of this memorandum is for us to move forward with the installation really doesn't make any point until we've painted the building.
And then, last but not least, where are you with segregating the turnout gear that's currently or has been stored in the engine bays?
Yeah, we're actually out looking for a best practice in regards to that. Most modern-day fire stations during the engineering phase of modern-day fire stations, they take that into consideration. Given the age of our real estate stock, that becomes problematic. One short-term solution was the pursuit of Conex boxes for outside storage. My experience with that has been they become an eyesore very quickly if you use that. So, we're looking either through the future of the safety coordinator that may be coming on board optimistically in the new fiscal year, or through just some self-surveys of other agencies that have aged fire stations as to see what the best practice is to address that particular need.
All right, thank you.
And 51 is our responsibility?
51 is ours and 72 is not.
Okay. And just one other comment is just cleaning and painting the bays. I wonder, we couldn't do that in-house?
We've looked at that. They actually bitted it out through the Stephanie's folks over at Fields and Facilities, and I believe that's open Thursday. We're hoping to see what the bids are Thursday. And if it's anything over the, I think it was $10,000, that we would bring it back before y'all.
Chief, one question. This complies with the recommendation of the ICAMA study?
This moves us in that direction, yeah. There is still the outlying remaining issue that Councilman Arnold alluded to is the storage of personal protective equipment in these areas that we're trying to find a feasible solution that's long-term.
Okay, good. Need a motion?
Mayor, move to award city contract number 2015-134 to Clean Air Concepts in the amount of $69,729.25 for furnishing and installing vertical airflow exhaust removal systems in the five city-owned fire stations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have one follow-up question to Chris's. On 72, because it's centrals, are we... Do they have exhaust systems in there, or is that something we need to talk to the Scott Frytag about?
I can most certainly have that conversation. I'll be quite honest, I don't know.
Okay.
I suspect, looking that it's been a fire station for some time, that it has some mechanisms in place, but I most certainly will have that conversation. And I do believe that the air certifying that was done may very well have taken that into account as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item I.
Item 3I, adoption of ordinance number 4927-1465, calling a special election to be held August 25, 2015, to vote on a transaction privileged tax dedicated to streets and roads tabled on March 24, 2015 for consideration at the April 14, 2015 meeting. Ordinance number 4927-1465, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, ordering and calling a special election to be held on August 25, 2015, to vote on whether to repeal the three-fourths of 1% transaction privilege tax dedicated to streets and roads and to adopt a 1% transaction privilege tax dedicated to streets and roads and the thereof.
Okay, this is a continuation of a motion that we had before us prior. And Charlie, your first step.
Mayor, thanks. And I made the motion to table this because there was a lot of discussion going on and potential additional items being added and considered. This morning, we had a meeting related to the budget, items about initiatives to be put on the ballot or ballot items was discussed. I think very clearly this council's divided on whether or not each item should go individually or as a collective group. With that being said, I want to get that question answered and out of the way. And with that, Mayor, for the purposes of getting that answered, I'd move to adopt ordinance number 4927-1465.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Let's have discussion. Jane, you're up, number 102.
Well, Mayor, I would like to offer an amendment to that motion. That was distributed to the council yesterday. I have copies without all the strike-throughs. If you wouldn't mind putting that up. Copy for the clerk. This amendment would, instead of a repeal and replace, just be directly stating that it would propose to add or adopt a 30, .33% sales tax, 33/100% transaction privilege tax dedicated to streets and roads and open space. It simplifies the issue without going through all the language of repeal and replace. It would preserve in place the 3/4% sales tax that the voters adopted in 2009 for streets, but add on a quarter percent for streets and roads and additional improvements associated with streets and roads. And it would also add on a .08% sales tax for open space acquisition and maintenance. Now, this is considerably less than what I had proposed last week, which was a quarter cent sales tax because the scope of the use is considerably less. Last week, I proposed a sales tax that would encompass lakes, natural areas, railways, the entire Granite Creek watershed within our city boundaries or up to Prescott Valley and Chino Valley boundaries, I should say, even including the county. This is the result of compromise, really. It has been suggested that we don't need .25% sales tax for open space. That may be true. We don't really have a firm dollar figure on what we do need for open space, but we do need, we do know that we have an open space plan that has not been completed. It was adopted by the council in 2009. There are significant parcels of land that we should and could acquire if we had the money. We don't need to acquire a title, but if we could get conservation easements on, for example, the large ranch that Councilman Arnold mentioned earlier, we would be well-positioned if we had this sales tax coming forward. As I said last week, open space is a very, very important, very, very, very important part of Prescott's economic security, and we need this to complete the plan. We need a source of revenue that's secure. We could use it in a stream to bond for major acquisitions, or we could use it a little at a time. .08% would bring in a little over $1 million a year and would really allow us to do a lot to help our economy grow in Prescott. So, I'm looking for a second to the amendment. I believe that's the appropriate.
I need to ask a question of, of our attorney. As I read this, it's very different from the motion that has been made and seconded. It was not on the agenda, and like I say, I look at it as different enough that I question whether the council can, can act on this because if it's not properly agendized, need your guidance.
Well, there are, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. There was a, I think this particular proposal is to amend the current motion and second to essentially, instead of a 1% dedicated to roads, to 1.25, 1% to roads, .25 to open space. There is another ordinance floating around that has combined all three, but you're not talking about that one, correct?
No, this is simply streets and open space. It is an amendment to the, what was in the agenda packet and on the agenda last week.
It's essentially similar to the motion you made last week?
It's, it's similar to, but different. The motion I made last week failed for lack of a second, so I'm making another motion. And what I've just passed out is a, an easier-to-read version of the same thing that was in your council packet with all the strike-throughs and underlines.
Proceedurally, what would be, since there's a motion and a second, what would be required to amend would be that the councilman moving, Councilman Arnold, would have to agree, and the second would have to agree to amend the motion and the second to, to adopt Councilwoman Wilcox's changes.
Now, do I have the right one? 4927-1465?
That's correct. It should say at the top, proposed amendment number 241415.
Okay, do I read this wrong where it talks about a transaction privilege tax dedicated to public safety, retirement pension debt reduction?
No, that's not the right one.
Disregard that one. That one some, that one floated out. I'm not sure when. It's, it's the, it's the, is, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's this one.
Mayor Paulson.
The, Councilwoman Wilcox is proposing is to amend the current motion and second from the 1% streets tax to a 1.25% TPT, 1%, which is dedicated to streets, .25 dedicated to acquisition management of open space watershed. So, she's proposing an amendment to the initial, to the motion and the second. But, but the one that deals with PSPRS is not on the table.
Okay, then I have, I have the wrong.
I have the wrong one, too. That's why I was a little confused.
Okay, sorry.
And that one would, and Mayor, that one would be so far sort of a field from the agenda item that I, my fear would be that it would not be consistent with open meeting law if we went in that direction with the PSPRS, so.
You're talking about the one if it had included the debt.
Right, that one, that one.
That was my interpretation.
Yes, I agree.
Mayor, this is the amendment. If you want to pass that down.
So, the, on the legal side, the amendment is in order to be made?
Right. The proposed amendment, as, as explained, requires both the, the councilman making the motion and the second to agree to those, to that amendment. And then, that would be the, let me see if I get this procedure right. Then, the council would vote to approve that amendment and then to approve the ordinance as amended, so there'd be two votes.
Okay. Is, is that the same numbers that the initiative that's being circulated?
No, the initiative is a repeal and replace 1%, repeal a .75% for streets, replace it with a 1% for streets, and add on a .25% for open space, natural areas, lakes, you know, the whole watershed cleanup.
But it's the language that's different, and that effect is still the same. It's one and a quarter.
No, this is, this is much, much less. Instead of .25%, it is .33, but .25 of that is for the additional streets tax, .08% is for open space. So, the overall net effect is that it's a lower sales tax.
He would put the total at 2.08.
Okay, so.
Yes, the total sales tax for the city would be 2.08.
See, I don't have that one. I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I think we all are.
I already seen the old one that's one and a quarter, so.
Maybe if you look up on the screen, that is the correct.
Is that proposed amendment number two?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you've got proposed amendment number one. Okay. And now, number two.
Yeah, okay, that's, there we go.
So, your desire is to put the two together on the same question?
Put the two together, streets and open space on the same ballot, and put it on the primary election.
Okay. So, to be clear, because now, now I'm, I'm actually tracking this. The proposal is to, is to amend the current motion, which is a, which is a, effectively a 1%, to maintain the 1% street sales tax and as of, from January 1st for 20 years. And the proposal, Councilwoman Wilcox's proposal is to amend that to effectively a 1.08 tax, 1% continued to be dedicated to streets and roads, a .08 to acquisition and management and maintenance of open space and watershed. Right?
Close, yes.
Her motion is in order.
She's, she's not making a motion. She's, she has to either ask that the, the councilman making the motion and second either amend their motion and second or withdraw, and then her motion becomes primary. So, but, but it's up to the councilman making the motion to take action.
So, the question is the, you, Charlie, and whoever seconded to withdraw.
Or to amend.
Or they make the amendment.
Right.
Because at this moment, Jane made the motion for to amend.
It's not, it's not a motion technically. There's a, there's a motion currently pending, and, and either there has to be amended or withdrawn in order to revise it to get to Councilwoman Wilcox's proposal.
And I'll even throw this in, even though I don't agree with it. I told Jane I'd second it so we could vote on it.
Well, you can't second it unless Charlie.
Right, because there's a, there's already a motion on the table to be decided.
Who's on first?
I'm ready to vote on whatever Charlie said.
This is once again why it's confusing and they should be separated, period. We can't even get it right. You think the public's going to get it right?
So, I have a comment, and then I'd like to ensue some discussion if it's in order before I decide to amend, withdraw, or do nothing.
We got till 6:00.
Or as I've been saying lately, super, because it's fantastic. All right. Here's my thought process, big picture. In the primary election, the voters need the opportunity to decide our future of streets, our future of open space, and the future of the city of Prescott as it relates to the over $70 million of pension liability. That has to happen. I am in support of the concept of a .08% question being posed to the voters related to open space maintenance acquisition. I have some questions on how the Citizen Advisory Commission would be established and It is a significant debate whether they should be combined or not combined, stand on their own or stand as a group.
Are we looking for discussion?
Yeah.
Because, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor. Yeah, since we're talking about it, about it this way, just my feelings are, I think we need to continue with the 1% and dedicate it solely to streets. That's what we need to take care of. The money's getting tight. I think it's financially responsible for us to ask for a separate item to address our liability with the public safety retirement system, try and get that house straightened out. And I'd also like to put in the fact that I think that needs to be reviewed by the city council every year, and I think it needs to be revet, ratified by the voters at least every six years. And if they want to continue, just to make sure that when it's over and it's done and we see we're making progress, we can get rid of it as fast as we can. If open space wants to be on there, we can have a separate item. I don't think we lock them together, and I know they say, well, if you don't tie them together, it has less of a chance to fail. I mean, I know the way I'm personally going to vote on all these items. I know the way I'm going to vote on them right now when I go to the ballot box with my other 40,000 Prescott residents. But we're deciding it for the city of Prescott. We are going to decide as voters what kind of city we live in financially. It's tough, and they need to be separate items, and we need to be very clear on how we move forward. I think that's just everything Charlie said.
Thank you. The reason they're tied together is that for the last 15 years, we have had a streets and open space tax. It's been a little confusing. There have been some questions, what does it include? Does the council have discretion and so forth? They are put together because in fact, they go hand in hand. Good streets and open space, bring tourists here who spend money, increase our sales tax revenues. They don't come here for streets, it's true, but it does enhance their experience when they're here, and it's certainly something the residents of Prescott like to have, as is open space. There are so many people who have moved here and who stay here because we have wonderful trails and parks and natural areas and open space in Prescott. It's something that's very unique. So, I think they do have to go together on the ballot.
I'm going to make a comment. I still have the metallic signs on our refrigerator in the garage that said yes for streets. And I think the intent at that time was to separate the two, ensure that streets had 3/4 of 1%, and give the open space proponents an opportunity to take to the public at a later date and ask the public for a quarter of 1%. That never happened, and there's been six years of opportunity. I don't think it's the right thing to do to hook the two together now and consider that as good strategy. I don't think it's our role to develop strategy to get the public to understand what we're trying to do. I think our role is to take it to the public, let them decide what the strategy ought to be. So, I agree with my fellow councilmen that this should be two separate items. Either one of them could win or lose, but they should stand on their own. So, Charlie, the, the moment is yours of withdrawing your motion. Then, we'll ask the person that made the second to withdraw their second if that's the desire, and, and vote from, from that point on.
Mayor, at this point, my preference would be to direct staff to bring at the earliest possible time, whether it be the next meeting or a special meeting, excuse me, an individual item for the public safety pension reduction and also at .55%, which is a $40 million savings over time.
Okay, now, this, this is your desire?
This is my desire, yep. And to bring forward an ordinance that would include a .08% for open space maintenance and acquisition. And at this point, I'm not going to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I'm not going to withdraw my second. Let's vote on this and go forward.
On the table is a motion to add the. add the quarter percent. John, give us the language you want.
The motion and second on the table is to approve ordinance number 49271465, as originally written, which would put on the August 25th ballot the question of repealing the, at that point, 3/4 percent transaction privilege tax dedicated to streets and adopt, in its place, a 1 percent transaction privilege tax dedicated to streets and roads through December 31, 2035.
Okay, now, is that the language you understand, your motion?
Yes. At this point, my motion is to do them individually. And in this case, specifically, the streets today.
So, we're going to vote on the motion that's on the agenda. Let's vote. Sure, come on down.
My name's Ralph Hess, Prescott. I oppose this, and the reason I oppose it is for, I'm going to give reference to one of the documents the city generated, which was Topics for Discussion with Legislative Delegation, January 30, 2015. And in that document, it states, "The reliance on local sales tax and state shared revenue creates volatility that puts quality of life and public safety at risk in Prescott. There is currently no statutory authority provided to cities and towns to reset or increase the primary property tax, not even by placing the tax on a ballot for voter approval." What was that? The, Mr. Kukneo, at one time earlier, said that, he lamented the fact that we're always in a crisis mode. We don't address these issues until we're in a crisis. And I've noticed that locally, every time a crisis arises that requires revenues, they go to the taxpayers with sales tax. And the reasons they go with a proposition for sales tax is the reasons that are set forth right in this city document that was to be the discussion item with the state legislators. Now, I took it in my notes, and the finance people from the city can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but at that time, the note was that $300,000 was lost from the general fund through state shared revenue, and $300,000 was lost from streets from the state. And earlier today, during your workshop, you were told, "Don't look to the feds and don't look to the state to bail the city out of these problems." But I suggest to you that the state, as you've noted, is causing these problems. They're giving exemptions. They're giving a sales tax exemption. They're reducing your shared revenues. And then, every time the state, I think Councilman Blair said, I didn't keep my note, but something to the effect that the state puts the screws to the county, and then the county has to put the screws to somebody else.
That was me, too.
Okay. And they're putting the screws to the citizens of Prescott and Yabupai County. And you guys are facilitating that because every time the crisis arises, you present a sales tax, which, as you know, is the most regressive form of taxation available and is disproportionately burdensome on people with lesser financial means. So, what I would like to see you do is challenge those state legislators. The county, as you know, or as I think you know, I know some of the staff know, the county has the statutory ability to seek an override of the property tax limitations and present it to the taxpayers. But the towns and municipalities do not. That could be amended. And in fact, I think that was one of the suggestions that was to be addressed with the legislative delegation. I'm not a great fan of taxes either, but property tax is less regressive than sales tax. And in fact, there's a statutory provision that preempts local communities from assessing an income tax because we get our share from the state. But the state's, as stated, is diminishing the portion that they're providing to the municipalities. So, you represent the citizens. Instead of keep passing on the state's reduction of providing the revenues and passing that on to the citizens, why don't you go and talk to the representatives of the state and put pressure on them to change these statutory provisions to allow cities and towns and municipalities to seek revenue means by whatever means the local electorate are willing to do? What state interest is there in preempting the revenue options that are available to the cities? Now, there is a constitutional provision with regard to how much you can increase property tax, but that can be addressed. Because, let's face it, your staff recognizes it. You recognize it. You've many times lamented the over-dependence on sales tax revenues. You can't keep going to that well. And if you want to address these things before it becomes the next crisis, I suggest that you look at those avenues.
And can I comment, Mayor?
Yes, sure you may.
And I think that's one of the reasons why, if we do go to the sales tax and we, to address the Public Safety Retirement System, I agree with you wholeheartedly that it needs to get reformed at the state. When we're looking at the charts of what Prescott looks like in just two fiscal years, you know, the state is done with their session now. We have to wait a whole another year to try and introduce legislation. You know, when we tried to introduce some legislation on the group homes, we saw what a struggle that was. You have to win seven trials in a row in order to get something passed like that. And I think if we do pass this tax, I think it needs to be reviewed and have the ability to be canceled by the City Council every year. I think it has to be renewed by the population of Prescott every six years if it wants to continue. You know, that way, we ensure that we have a plan to address it, but at the same time, we need to keep working on the state to reform PSPRS.
My suggestion would be that you go beyond that because even in your budget document for this fiscal year 2016, there's provisions in there that relate to, lament the fact that you're losing revenues from the state and the burden's falling on local communities. So, all the breaks that they're giving to corporations and lobbyists at the state level is being paid by people here in Prescott and Yabupai County. And you're facilitating it.
Yeah. Ralph, free runoff. Thanks for your comments, number one, and we've been friends a long time.
Right.
And I appreciate that, and it'll always continue that way. This particular item, street maintenance, I think it's right to do it this way because it's a bigger bucket. It's not only property owners in Prescott that use our streets, where if this was a property owner decision, property taxes to take care of this need, it would be pretty tough on our Prescott property owners, where this way, we're able to spread that cost among all of the people, wherever they come from, that do use our streets. So, in this case, I think we're on the right track. Now, there are some other cases that we need help in the worst way with our general fund, that property tax is probably, wouldn't be popular, but it's a proper place to go, and that's for our fire department. Because their first task is to take care of property, protect property in the city of Prescott. And that's certainly a Prescott responsibility. Through mutual aid, we get a lot of sharing, both ways, and it's very fair. But I think in this particular case, and I appreciate your comments, that sales tax is the appropriate place to go. And as we look forward, it's going to take legislation to even allow us to take an initiative to the public to talk about paying other bills with increased property tax. We're not there yet either with the legislature, and our chances are pretty slim. Every year, it looks good, and then it falls apart. The wheels fall off. But thanks for your comments, and I appreciate you being here.
Mayor, just one follow-up comment to that. Recently, there was an article in the paper where it was commented that a lot of the state legislators, who have no municipal experience at all, say, "Well, it's just easier for the municipalities, so they push stuff off on us because we are the end of the line. We are the end of the road where the can gets kicked. There's nowhere else to go when they do that."
Anyone else in the public to comment?
Afternoon again. I'm Sandra Smith. Mayor, current council. I was speaking with a businessman, Mike, who runs the secondhand man up Montezuma, on my way home earlier. And we got to talking about the tax that we're discussing now that's on the table. And his view is, said it individually. And I agree with that. As a senior on a fixed income, I would rather see each item and decide on each item individually. So, I'm just passing that along because he was pretty vehement about it.
Well, on today's item, that's the direction we're, looks like we're going. The other two items, that's yet to be seen.
Yeah. One at a time.
Lindsey, are you coming down? Okay. I saw something in your hands, so I suspected you weren't.
As I mentioned, when we've talked about this before, I've had a lot of experience working on committees that have been successful in putting initiatives over the top. I was a member of the First Committee for Better Streets back in 1995 that successfully passed the first 1 percent for streets, and that passed by a 2 to 1 margin. So, we obviously made a case to the voters that it was important and that we needed to fund streets and roads and the maintenance for them.
And that was 1 cent, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, a couple of years later, I was part of the committee that worked on the Watson and Willow Lakes Initiative. Those are the two proposition committees that I've been very closely involved with. I've been peripherally involved with some of the subsequent ones, like the 2000 one, which was streets and open space. The city does not have a very good history in terms of the success of their referrals to the ballot on sales tax questions unless they have a partner with a citizens committee that educates the public and promotes passage of the proposition. When the Committee for Better Streets helped get the first 1 percent for streets passed, that was after the city had twice referred a similar proposition to the ballot and hadn't gotten it passed. And all of the successful ones subsequent to that have had a citizens committee working alongside and partnering with the city. Two weeks ago, after you guys discussed the 1 percent to restore the other 25 percent, .25 percent, I became part of a citizens initiative to take that .25 off the table. And we are circulating petitions to get an initiative on the ballot, which would be on the August primary ballot. And it would be pretty much the language that Councilwoman Wilcox submitted a couple of weeks ago, 1.25, which would include 1 percent for streets, giving you the .25 that you guys have discussed that you need, and adding, taking that off the table, .25 for open space. I'm confident that we will get the signatures to put that on the ballot. But in terms of the success of a proposition, and based on my experience and the experience of others who have been part of successful propositions, if you do this and we do this, you'll have two competing propositions.
Right.
That means they're both likely to fail. If you separate all of these issues, the separate issues will probably also fail. That's just based on experience in terms of the strategy. I know you said you didn't want to discuss strategy, but I presume that you want this to be successful to meet the needs of the city. If we have a proposition, a referral from the council that says 1 percent for streets and replaces that 3/4 percent, and we have a 1.25, that's going to confuse the voters. And, like I say, it wouldn't be surprising to those of us who have worked on these propositions before if they both fail. The strongest case to the community is if you go forward with the partnership of a local committee. And the partnership to secure Prescott's financial economic future, which I'm a part of, we would be delighted to go forward with a proposition that we could support. But none of the stuff that you have discussed so far is something that we could probably support. Now, if you were to put something that brought the street stuff forward, brought the public safety stuff forward, and provided for open space, we would give serious consideration to maybe not filing our petitions or withdrawing from the ballot and supporting a combined proposition that would meet all of those purposes and all of those needs. But we would very much want to see a dedicated funding stream for the open space. And in terms of the amount, it would have to be an amount that was adequate to provide for the purposes. If it's going to be as low as .08, then it has to be restricted to just maintenance and acquisition. The initiative that we're circulating petitions on opens it up a little broader than just maintenance and acquisition. It also includes improvements and restoration and for trailways, natural areas, lakes, and open space. So, it's a little broader, and that would justify the .25 that's in the initiative. If we have competing propositions, my question is, if they both pass, what happens?
My understanding is whichever one gets the most votes would be the successful one. Now, that's what we have now. To answer your comments on a citizens group in the last, today's Tuesday, starting about Friday, I've started getting calls from citizens offering their services to help the city if this is the direction we wanted to go. They are single purpose. They want to vote on it individually and let the public decide which, how they want to go forward. So, if the council enacts us today, we will have a citizens group to support this item on its own because some of us think that's the way it ought to be. I have a real heartburn with 25 percent for just open space. That's, in today's money, that's $3.7 million a year.
But for multiple purposes.
When we only have $13 million for the whole street system in the city, it doesn't make sense. I think that would lead to terrible waste of citizens' money, trying to spend that much money every year on what we're doing, unless we just went on a buying spree and tried on all of the unoccupied property in town. And I don't think that's the right way to go either. I think we all agree that the open space program, and particularly, the trail system, has been great. And the last two years, we've not spent, well, in my five years, we spent very, very little money in acquisition of open space because I personally was more concerned about our road system to attract people to come here and provide public safety so they feel like they were safe when they were here. So, we have not spent much money on my tour, on the acquisition of open space, but we've created a lot of trails. And our sales tax revenue from the tourism side has continued to grow at a little above the state average. So, there's no question that open space, trails, amenities, ball fields, and all those things are extremely valuable to Prescott. We have to do that. We have some other things that go along with that. Certain weekends, certain time of the year, we can't handle any more people. We don't have the capacity. I have been an advocate the last couple of years that we've got to start looking at doing something to increase our capacity so that we can have more people. something to increase our capacity so that we can have more people come visit us and spend more money, and we take in more sales tax. So it's all part of a big picture. But we will have a citizens group that will take a look at this and, I think, provide strong support. I think it's okay to have competing interests, because that truly gives the public an opportunity to decide what they want to do. So I just hope it can be a friendly battle and let's find out what the public wants and do it in the August election.
One of the mistakes of the current 1% for streets and open space is that inadvertently the words "maintenance" got left out of the proposition. So to maintain the open space and natural areas that have been acquired and that the city has had dedicated or has acquired through purchase or dedicated easements, et cetera, all of that maintenance money has to come out of the general fund.
That's right.
So the initiative that we're proposing includes maintenance, which would relieve the general fund of that responsibility.
That'd be very helpful, and I think it's a great selling point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Daniel Mattson again. I favor the approach that you are getting ready to vote on right now, because I think that the citizens deserve the right to choose where their money's going to go. And I think 0.8%, in fact, I had a conversation with somebody from the Over the Hill Gang who said 0.25% is way more than what is needed. 0.8% makes a lot more sense, and I think these should be separate. And if, I mean Lindsey talked about a citizens committee, and I was sitting there thinking, well, heck, I'd get on a citizens committee to support the 1% and the public service retirement tax. And I even think that the 0.8% is a good idea, where I do think they should all be separate. And because that way, you know, there's some people who may think, and that's another discussion I've heard, that maybe the people who are really interested in open space should start their own organization and take donations from people who want open space instead of making everybody pay for it. Now...
Now, don't complicate it anymore.
I'm not, well, I'm just saying, this would, if they're separate, it gives us the opportunity to make the choices that we want, and we have the option of voting yes on all three.
Correct.
But if we combine them together, you're liable to have some people who resent having their foot held to the fire. If we want good roads, we have to agree to open space also. I think you're going to have some negative backlash from that approach. So I think you're doing it the right way. I suggest that you go ahead and approve the 1%.
Thank you, Dan. Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, I give...
Let Dave, he's been waiting a long time.
Thank you, Mayor.
You just preempted the council, yeah.
Okay. Mayor and Council, Dave Mauer, Prescott Chamber of Commerce. Like your position today, ours is a work in progress, we recognize that. But I think we can find common ground on the motion in front of you right now regarding the street tax at 1%. I was having flashbacks of my own back to 2009, the Vote Yes for Streets campaign, which the chamber helped run along with Jason Gucy. Late Tom Pettit was part of that effort. Jim Lawrence, I believe, is in the audience tonight. It was a good committee, obviously passed, and I think the same type of citizens group can put this one over the top as well. From the chamber's standpoint, we can certainly support this. This motion in front of you would have no impact on the current sales tax, it'd be revenue neutral, basically. Not revenue neutral, but the same percentage neutral. And while I'm up here, the chamber also has talked about an open space item. We can support that without naming specific numbers at the moment, but we, like others, believe there is advantages to having an open space program in the city. Our board, though, is firmly behind separating the items, as many of you have talked about as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate it. Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, and I give the public more credit, too. I don't think we have to make a deal to trick our way into more votes. And as a council and just personally myself, I don't think it's our job to lobby for, promote, or champion any of these measures. And I won't participate in it. I think our role is to make sure that the public has accurate information in order to make their own decision. And like I said before, I think citizens are going to have to decide what kind of community they want to live in. And I think they're smart enough to make that decision.
Charlie?
Mayor, thanks. You know, there is no doubt that there is a passionate group of people about open space in our community. I mean, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind. And Gene has been a very good advocate of that. And again, I, I'm not going to tell you how I'm going to vote in the voting box, but as far as my position today, I am willing to support referring a sales tax for open space as soon as possible to the voters. I'm comfortable at 0.08. It's $1 million a year. It's $20 million over the span of the tax to address many of the issues we have, deal with acquisition. Do I think it's a number one priority compared to the pension issue? No. But I do think ultimately it's something that the voters should have the ability to decide. You know, Chris, I'll disagree a little bit. I'm going to be a very big advocate as it relates to the pension issue, because I think that that is the future of the community. I think as we look at open space and we look at good streets, that is all important. But I'm going to stand by my decision to say, keep them separate. That's where I'm at today. And again, I would ask that we move forward on the staff level of getting something that we can vote on as soon as possible, so that everybody knows what the city's position is and that process of community involvement can get started.
Okay. Mayor, Gene?
If I understand correctly from the information you gave us this morning, Craig, we have until May 27th to refer another sales tax ordinance to the voters for the primary election. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's clarification that obviously we have on the projector here. The city attorney pointed out that a question associated with that timing is whether there would be a publicity pamphlet or not. Apparently, it's not required for a sales tax measure. I would think that in line with what Councilman Arnold has proposed, we should bring something back to the council just as soon as we can get it back to the council and get it on the agenda, so we have enough time before May 27th.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes?
I'm just going to go ahead and say, you know, I believe in open space as much as anybody. And a little history lesson, as Elizabeth Ruffner would put it, 1995, street tax passed singly because the two before were tied to recreation, and they failed. Then at 95, streets passed, and as it moved forward in 2000, when Sam Steyer was the mayor, open space wasn't, maintenance wasn't inadvertently left out, it was left out intentionally because the proposition had already been written. I questioned it. Sam Steyer said, just vote with us, we'll find a way to find the money for maintenance. That hasn't happened. The reason why open space and streets passed, because open space was tied to the roads, not the roads tied to open space. The clamor in this community at the time when it passed was strictly due to the fact when Sam Steyer was the mayor, the scar that is on White Spar Road in Copper Basin, and the taking of properties and tearing them up for development. Sam led the charge, along with other folks in this community, to put out there the open space portion that was tied to the streets. That is the truth of how all this happened, and not coloring it in any way, and I think people need to understand that. I was here, I was part of it.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Yes, sir.
Dennis Duval, Prescott. Well, I for one, support the Wilcox Amendment, and I think the two, open space and roads should be combined. I think, I think people have a better idea of what open space is as we go into celebrating another Earth Day. People have more of appreciation for the environment, and we should have at least the courage to put the environment and the roads we drive on, on the same ballot initiative and let people choose. I don't support the people's, or the citizen petition, because like Barbara Jacobson said last March 24th, we're sick of gathering signatures, we're sick of doing petitions. That's your job, you can just put it on the ballot, and that's what you should do. Last March 24th, there were some really, really good arguments presented to you why the cities should continue to invest in open space and put money into open space acquisitions. And especially Cecilia Jergen, Jergen, Jernigan, she made a really impassioned plea for tourism tied to our beautiful Prescott environment. And so what I want to do real quick right now is just to read a letter that was written by a former Prescott city employee, Toni Kaus, who was the director of the Prescott City Library. Just part of her letter. While, she said, while tourist events have their place, outdoor opportunities like hiking, birding, paddling and hiking, or biking, are less date-specific and take advantage of our year-round natural beauty and infrastructure. She thinks Prescott's awesome catalog of trails could provide just the off-season tourism boost our little city needs. We envision a marketing campaign geared to baby boomers and folks who would be easily sold on the idea of spending all or part of a visit hiking in spectacular scenery within minutes of their hotel or campsite. Hikes might be planned with an after-hike beverage and a well-earned restaurant meal or with an afternoon of downtown shopping. Borrowing from the inscription on the new Granite Gardens Trail bench, let's promote, go outside and play tourism. So your sales tax, tourism are tied to open space, and I urge you to approve the Wilcox Amendment and have the courage to put this on the ballot for us to choose to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
You know, Mayor...
Why don't you all do an arm wrestling there in the middle and...
There wouldn't be care to...
Okay. Come on down, somebody.
You want to call for a motion?
No, I was going to make a comment.
Jim Lawrence, 345 High Chaparral Loop.
Good afternoon, Jim.
Thank you. Since I was a member of the citizens that spent almost two years to get the 3/4 tax approved, I felt it was important that I share a little bit of my concerns. At quarter to six, I would suggest, even though this is the meeting when it has to be done, I would suggest that all of the conversations and discussion that we've had, especially practical from the standpoint as to having this measure be combined or not combined or so forth, I would like to say I have very real concern that we aren't ready to be able to do that for this primary election, that we should continue to do the discussion that we already had. It was unfortunate I was not able to give remarks at this morning's meeting, but I'd like to just have you consider two points. One, the, when we went before the public, part of the 3/4 that we were asking, this was a new concept from the standpoint of the city, we were asking for dedicated funds that would be used for the streets for 20 years. The 20 years was set up so that we would be able to use credit if it was during this period of time. That was a very real possibility, a tool to be able to get this money set up. We haven't taken advantage of that credit, and that is something that should be done. The, just a very short thing from the standpoint of the history. In 2009, a group of citizens were selected by the city council to come up with a capital needs program. They worked for almost a year to come up with the capital needs, and they, for very good programs that were associated. The only one that was necessary or was considered immediate of that was the streets. So a special committee was set up with the citizens, some of the members of the capital needs group, the city council, additional citizens, and they came up with a special committee that looked at how best to explain this to the public and had to get it passed. The committee came up with the 3/4 cent, and that was then, as Dave mentioned, we, some of the members of that became on the pack, that went out and were successfully getting it set up. One of the things that we did not do, as, that had been done in the past, was to take a look at the revenue stream. We know that when we are looking at something like the street program, we are not able to determine exactly what, what kind of bang for the buck we're going to get as far as with the city is, how much it's going to cost. We had a period of time when we went, actually went out and did place contracts for streets that were possibly a little ahead of time, because we were in the situation, we wanted to be able to use the money that we had while the prices were low. But the important thing from the standpoint of the revenue stream coming in, we have no way, unfortunately, of being able to determine what the amount of money that we are going to get for this 3/4 of a cent or for the 1 cent. In 95, as it was mentioned, we projected that the, that the sales tax revenue coming in from the 1 cent was going to be, give us $5 million a year, $5 million a year. In 2000, we went to the public and said that our projection then was 7.5 million for the 1 cent. When, by 2007, the revenue coming into us peaked at $15 million. Now, we're running about 13 million. So the difference that this 1 cent, in the 20 years that we've had it in place since 95, has swung from $5 million a year to the 15 million, and now back, back down to $15 million. 95 has swung from $5 million a year to the 15 million and now back, back down to 13 million. So when we try to tell the public that we've got a crisis as far as the three-quarters of a cent because we project out into the next 20 years that we won't be able to cover our taxes, or we won't be able to cover our needs for the streets, we're, we just can't say that. Our track record as far as projecting, just not that accurate.
Thank you, Jim. Chris, you had something?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, when Dennis was talking, it started getting me thinking on some other things. And, you know, do we have open space locked in in our community? I think we do. It's called the Prescott National Forest and I spent a lot of my childhood out there. And when we talk about eco, or tourism, are there any trails that go through the Granite Dells right now? There's tons of trails that are going through the Granite Dells right now. For the hiking, right outside of your hotel room, Constellation Trail is outstanding. Those are spectacular hikes. So is Thumbute. We just almost are completed with the Circle Trail. That's a 50-mile loop around the city. Can you take your kayak or canoe out? We got Goldwater Lake. We got Lynx Lake. We got Watson Lake. We got Willow Lake. We got Granite Basin Lake. All these places are locked in already. We already got this stuff. I think the thing right now is that we have only so much money to get through a financial crisis that we're here right now. And we have to go out and ask the voters what they want Prescott to look like. And I think they're only going to let us have so much on that sales tax. So, you know, I, I think we've done a good job collecting the open space so far. And maybe we don't need to buy any more right now and wait till times get a little bit better and maybe there'll be time to revisit it. You know, maybe it'll time in great with us paying off the public safety retirement system. Then you'll have all kinds of cash.
Thank you. Gene?
I'd like to remind you that once open space is gone, it's gone. It's not like a street that can be repaved and redone. And the reason we need to act now is that there is open land that is going to be surrounded by the city very soon, once that large annexation parcel comes in. In fact, it is surrounded now. Airport to the north, Old Town Prescott to the south. And there's some very wonderful land still left in the Granite Dells that hasn't been acquired, hasn't been developed into trails. A lot of it, hundreds of acres, is being sought after by several developers. And once it's gone, it's gone forever.
Do they have water?
You know, there are lots of different ways to handle that. Cisterns, rainwater harvesting.
I'm, I'm, let's take one more from the audience, if there is one. Okay.
Thomas Slayback, 715 East Goodwin Street. And I just basically have one question for the mayor and the council, and that is when? We just had some discussion about the 2009 and basically we heard from Mr. Arnold that it's not a top priority. Just heard from the mayor with his thing about the signs on the refrigerator. Well, back at that time, I was and still am a member of the Open Space Alliance Committee. And I actually argued against support for the streets on that committee with Tom Pettit and Jim Lawrence. Jim can attest to this. And the reason was because the agreement basically was that we would support the streets and that shortly in the future, the city would then put to the voters an item on open space. And it hasn't happened. Instead, I just heard, well, it should go back to the public and they should do initiative to get it out there. Well, my question still remains is for the city to do its job, when? Thank you.
Tom, just to really answer in a hurry, that's the first I have heard that the city, the city was going to put that initiative on. I did not know that.
It was given to the open space committee that the city in the future would be able to put this out to the citizens. And under that, I argued against it.
Yeah, well, thanks for your, one more.
And Mayor, if I can just clarify one statement.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it should be a voter initiative. I'm saying we should direct staff to bring back an open space issue for us to vote on to put on the primary ballot. So, just so it's very clear.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Pull that thing down to where you can make us hear you.
David Hoffman with Dave &amp; Associates, Three Town East Union. Those of us who are here since nine o'clock this morning with you all, except we didn't have the comfortable seats like you do, I'm wondering why we're dragging this out till close to, well, six o'clock already, when the only item that had to be acted on, you did act on, was the adoption of the general plan so that it can go for ratification and the call for the election for that purpose because that has to be done a little earlier than these others. And we have this up here that says, May 27th is the deadline for, the rest of the language on all these sales tax issues. It sounds like the community is all over the place. And so I would suggest you postpone this for at least till your next meeting before you take an action on how you want to word these things. This morning, and a couple of you, the younger generation that we are going to lose when you go off, we're talking about the city being in a terrible financial hole because of the public safety retirement system liability. That's not on the agenda today, so you couldn't even discuss it. And whether you decide to go with three separate options or more, or combine whatever you want to combine in the wording, shouldn't that be on a public hearing so the public can voice something about it? So if you postpone and get these other items on, like open space, whether it's for acquisition or just maintenance, because maintenance kept coming up. I mean, I've been here a long time and, and I remember doing a video called Prescott at the Crossroads, which started the first sales tax issue for the roads in this town. That was a very long time ago. We need to have a complete discussion on all of the items and put them all on the same election. I don't understand why you would put part of these sales tax items on one election and then part on another. So how about considering waiting until at least your next meeting to discuss this and put it all on an agenda so you can discuss it all?
I think to be clear, all three of these, if we meet, if, if all three of them are decided by this council whether to refer to the ballot or not, by May 27th will all be on the primary. As I, when I made the initial motion, there has been so much discussion about should they be separate or together. And if we decide today to move forward with a streets proposal, then that's a clear sign that we're going to do each one as an individual item on the primary ballot, to me. Now whether each one will get enough votes to come out of the council to do that, we'll see. But that's from my perspective where we're at. This is a signal that needs to be made. Are we going to combine or are we going to do them individually? I think we can make that decision today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Go.
Call the question.
The question has been called for by Councilman Blair. It's time to vote.
Passes six to one, Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Any further business to be transacted? Anybody in there? We're now adjourned.